We are off the deal just saying.
Dance.
I know, I can talk about dance.
I'll text.
He's probably just.
Doing alright, thanks sir. Yeah.
Yes, you did.
So Hill Sydney is where we want to go.
What?
See what they did with their rail park.
Oh. It's only five hours away. If Tom and I are driving, it's five hours. We follow speed, we're straight. Hey, the cops are careful.
One of your departments. And he admitted.
Okay, well, can you come to the back door and we'll ask. He's on his way, he's in from his back door. He doesn't have his key.
Yeah, Richard Murching's even asking me, she's like.
So can you give me? How's up Tom?
Uh, he's one of all developments since.
Oh. He wouldn't be wearing a blue shirt, would he?
Yeah. Happens to be sitting behind Mr. Brooks and next to the city attorney.
They actually did a deal, what do they call it, I don't stop or whatever. It's actually safer and better than.
That's what it was, 100%. Look both ways, I'm one way straight, that's more than. He did look, he looked both ways and he really told me. There's no waiver, we're going to go spines, right?
So how many bands did they have on Saturday?
I think four.
And I said two.
What time?
We saw.
What time to get done? So people could get to sleep by 10:00. I was worried it's gonna go to midnight.
No, they've never broken the noise.
I did, I did get one call.
So actually, because it's already been over by now, about an hour fifteen minutes. They've always been done before eleven.
And if they had it till eleven, they closed everything.
I didn't get there until nine fifteen.
It was affirmation.
Yeah, I was being the true politician, I was holding babies.
Yeah. No, not that far.
That's awesome though. What's that? Sure, I was. You know, so politicians want to say something.
I think I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Which is 1804, which means stress levels are super, super high for. As a retired master chief. Five minutes early, he's on time. We are not capable of doing that very often, so it just drives me nuts. And then Cavaliers played like crap on Saturday.
There's that.
And the Hosters blew two eleven point leads. For there, I think we got all the, I think we got all the garbage out of the way now, try to be in a better.
Yeah.
Maybe. Alright, the purpose of this session tonight, one is to not listen to me talk to you a whole lot like we did back in January when we did the goal setting session. So what I've asked is the directors to be here tonight to brief the status of each of the goals. That they are most closely related to, so you're gonna, they're gonna be coming and going as we go through slides. Jenna, if you would hit the next slide for me, I don't have my clicker, I used to have my old clicker.
Sorry, and I'm not used to doing this either.
She's not used to doing this either.
No, it's not working.
Oh, well, it worked on, on her computer, but it hasn't updated it over here yet. I wanna go through the agenda and, and the ground rules, 'cause you don't always have ground rules. For the meetings that I facilitate, and the first ground rule for me always is. If we don't meet together and assume every comment that is made is made with positive intent, it makes it hard to get any work done. Because we're focused on what we think is somebody's thoughts, instead of the information that's being shared. So I would ask you to assume positive intent on, on each statement that's made, whether they choose the right words or not, but if we could focus on that. And then allow each of the speakers to finish before we interrupt them, which you guys are pretty good about that. I'm not, so the we will listen intently means. Let's not watch the Cubs game on our phone?
No, I was making sure my volume was turned down.
See, Jeff answered because fellow Cubs fans would be, that would be something that we might be doing, but not.
It was the worst.
He just.
Is there, that's not cool, is there any possibility that we could move that podium and you could stand here and talk? Because you keep walking in front of the screen, we're trying to read, and it is really distracting. Or we can all turn around and away from you and look at this one. That would be awesome.
I'm just staying. That will violate all the rules of public speech and lean on the podium, no, that's alright, it's fine. I could do that too. Now I'm gonna be super, super casual.
Okay.
Yeah, you raised the L ring, I mean, you're an agent, so if you're gonna, so if you are gonna poke fun at somebody, make sure you're doing it from a, a position of solid standing.
Mystery loves company.
Here's what, here's what I would like to accomplish tonight, I'd like to go over the seven goals that we set back in January for the governing body. I'd like to go over the status of where we're at on each of the items that, that we agreed upon in January would define success for those goals. So what has been, what's been accomplished on each slide so far, in red, you'll see what has been accomplished. And there may be further updates since this was put together a week ago. So we'll, we'll be able to do that. And I wanna be able to answer two questions, two questions tonight, are we on track? To complete the goals that we set in January for, for this governing body? And are there any course corrections that we need to make? And then with each, with each item, as the directors finish with you, I'm also gonna ask. What action items do we need to add to ensure these get complete? And I will list those, and then I'm gonna ask the directors to take ownership for each of those actions. We'll put a name to each, each action that ends up on that sheet up there, that's what the post-it note is for. Eric Collins, did you wanna make any comments before we start?
Can I just, a couple, a couple things if I could, you know, we did our first goal setting twenty months ago. Twenty months ago, I think, and this is our fourth time now we got together to, to talk about these. And at that first meeting, we talked a little bit about our rules of engagement, how we would work with each other. And for the most part, we really honored that, and I think it's set a tone for our ability to, to work together and accomplish things, just wanna say thank you to that. It doesn't have to be that way, so we've chosen to make it that way, and it's appreciated very, very much. So I think that's probably the biggest thing that I wanna say to our directors, I wanna thank you also, because, you know, it's been twenty months since I was sworn in as mayor. And I love our team, and I love all the things that we've been able to accomplish to this time. And again, I feel like when we're in our directors' meetings and stuff, there's a, an atmosphere of not they, but us, how can we work together? And I think that's a real positive, powerful message, and I feel that, I really do. The laughter and the way that we work together, and I think there's genuine liking of each other, and, and I think that that's because everybody's trying to work together. So I think we have two really good teams, and I'm looking forward to this exercise tonight. To, as you say, course corrections or whatever you wanna call it, and as we, for the next four months, at the, at the end of this year, and as we go. I will share with you though, I think these goals were significantly more, more challenging than last year's goals. And so it'll be interesting to see, you know, as we hear back on all of the progress that's been made. Corrections we need to make, and maybe we need to add a little bit to the timeline, we're gonna accomplish them. So my thanks to everybody.
With that, we'll go to goal number one. Which was the Reed Avenue corridor, and Tom Cobb, city engineer, is going to break the status on where we're at. I will add in what needs to be added in, and then I think there's two slides, two slides or three slides for this one. Alright, we'll go through that and. And Tom will open the floor for questions and comments. What we need to do.
Stay behind the podium, don't move. Okay, so good evening.
Yeah, don't move, Tom.
Don't move, so I'll apologize first, 'cause I've added some things on the end unbeknownst to Andy, but we'll make through this. So apology is my, I don't do this very frequently anymore, trying to do it, I'll apologize right from the start. So I know that your goal is to designate project manager, and what I'm gonna say to you is. I guess the first thing I'm gonna say, it's on, and it's on my updated slide. We, we are in the process of doing that, and I'll, I'll go through that in a little bit more detail in a second. So updates to the steering committee, I know that you had, sorry.
Do you want that slide?
Yeah, you can, I can finish, make sure that we cover what, what, what was the original. That new steering committee, I know you've done twice now, and we were anticipating to come back with you with a new scope. For what that project manager services are gonna be. The Greenway Connector to the 15th Street. This one I didn't do, I know that G D's doing her work on her end, but I, my feeling is we're gonna actually add this, the scope of services, which I'll explain in a moment. And then a right-of-way issue would also be solved in both those two, so now you can flip over Jennifer and I'll cover more of the basics. So I look at this as two phases, so sorry, two phases. Phase one is the program design project management, and what we're doing right now is we put out a statement of interest. For a proposal from a consultant called Quandell. They are experts in rail management and programming, they have a company based in Chicago. But we had contacts with several different people that I knew from the Colorado Rail Commission. So what, what came about from this is, is just their expertise, one is part of their team is DJ Mitchell. Who is, was the former vice president of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, he is on that team. I also have Randy and Randy Grau Rucker, and he was, worked for the C dot V O T for forty years, and his job was rail coordination. Those are the two primary people that are involved in this, but that's Quandell, and that's their local branch in here in Denver. But their scope of services will include what I call program, program management. They'll do all the negotiation and revise the concept plan to the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, and they'll get concurrence. They're gonna reengage the steering committee goal that Mr. Leiborn had developed, and our former steering committee. To, to get with those West Edge property owners, and that's where we're gonna resolve what we're gonna call a right-of-way and ease my constraints. And based on my knowledge with, and discussions with Randy and DJ Mitchell, it's, I think when you, when you find out where they're going with this, we don't have all the details yet. But you're gonna find that it's, it's gonna take care of itself, they've got some great ideas, and DJ bringing him to the team is, is so important. So when I, I say resolve, so we don't know how it's gonna look, but it, it, it's gonna get resolved. And then finally, they're gonna find additional funding opportunities, and that's phase one. So that contract will be less than 200,000, and so the process we went through was just a statement of interest. We're gonna get that team on board, and they're gonna start moving forward with that to manage it. We're gonna engage a new consultant, I, I terminated on Wilson as of about two weeks ago now, on Friday. I sent them a termination letter, their services are no longer needed for the design of the Reed Avenue Railroad. They did not function like we had wanted them to, they wanna come up and meet with me about that. But we, we thought it was in the best interest of the city and the taxpayer that we move on to a different consultant. We're gonna go out for a separate RFP to complete the final design and a construction document preparation on the Reed Avenue Railroad. And then we're gonna add in the Greenway Connector component to it, so we'll have both of those pieces, it'll be an expanded scope from what it was before. So that is my update at least from the reading perspective.
Do we get to ask questions?
No, he does lots of questions. Lots, please.
So I have several, I just made notes up. So the $200,000, is that going to come from the fifth penny that was originally designated, or I guess it was six penny that was designated for the 15th Street corridor?
Yes, ma'am, do I go directly through you, wanna do this or I do this? Okay, so, um, so yes, there, yeah, we are, it's gonna come directly out of the six penny.
Okay, and then the report, is there, I know you're just now working on the agreement for a contract for that $200,000 with Quindall. Will you make sure you include some sort of regular reporting to us?
Yes, no problem.
Okay, and then it, you talked about reengaging the initial steering committee. But I was under the impression that many of those members were engaged in the revised new steering committee. Were there individuals that were left out of the revision that were not, that were in phase one?
I don't know the answer to that, 'cause I wasn't part of the creation of the second one, so I just wanted to make sure that we had included all the West Edge property owners that we had previously discussed things with. So we include them all together, so that steering committee just didn't function because we weren't moving anywhere, so. This, this will be, we'll reengage.
And then my last question is the design piece, it says that in phase two, we're going to engage a new consultant to do a design. So the project and program management people are just simply basically our mediators and negotiators.
Well, I said that, but you, very astute that you picked up on it, so it's two pieces of this. So that first one is actually gonna actually review the concept, because part of this, to get the railroad to actually move forward. Is that what I, what this team is gonna bring a new concept aboard, because what we were working, our other consultant was going the wrong direction. They were thinking of things laterally instead of linearly, so we have to accomplish it going, we really need to focus on the whole quarter, getting something done through the whole thing. And then work our way organically out from that edge, and I know it sounds really strange, but in order to get the railroad to move, and also to ensure that we're moving with the property owners. We really have to get something for the whole core. So were, were we looking at this in a whole different way? The other consultant wanted to move boxes that were switches for the rail, this team is like, let's leave everything, we're not gonna move anything. We're gonna build on what's there now, so it's a whole different concept.
Great, thank you.
Hey, for your questions?
I do.
I would like to have one of the members of the council be on the steering committee. Welcome other members of the council at the committee meetings.
Sure.
I guess, I guess I have one question, Tom, and that would be. What's the timeline, what are you looking at on having that RFP out and. So hearing from the respondents and, and hopefully making a selection.
So I think we're going to, Wes was finishing it today, I think we wanted to at least run it through the other steering committee so that you had, you folks had a chance to add to it. So I think that's gonna take place next Friday, so we can speed it up if you wanna do it by email, but I think we're gonna be done by this week, and then whatever input you wanna add to it. So we're, we're right there, and now I expect a response within the two weeks.
That's great.
Within a month, hopefully we're moving forward, we'll see a new contract, and we're going.
Good, sooner it's better.
One more question, that's not a, there's been a lot of talk over the last six months about the West Edge project and the Reed. Avenue corridor being connected to the 15th Street project, and having, calling out all the West Edge project. So when you're presenting, you're presenting on basically from Lincoln Way North on the Reed Avenue corridor, is that kind of what your concept of that is?
Yes, ma'am, I was thinking the whole thing together, including the 15th Street rail experience, this whole thing needs to really tie together. And then eventually, of course, with, with, with the Wetlands area as well.
Okay, so, but this piece is not 15th Street corridor, or 15th Street also?
It's, it's, it's to tie it all together, we're gonna focus on the connection between the two projects. Along with the quarter itself.
But the project manager will only be, is, is this project manager always gonna do?
In order for me to stay under the 200,000, to meet our procurement requirements, I have to at least get it down to the point where it's Reed negotiation and then this process.
Okay.
'Cause if I go too far, I, I'm gonna exceed that procurement requirements.
I wondered about if we would be operating outside that six penny, so, a sales tax that was collected for the Reed Avenue corridor. If we, if start paying for consultants for the 15th Street project in addition to that.
And we're not, so the, the definition's pretty broad-based, ma'am.
Thank you.
Say, Tom?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to hear you mention the Pump House Wetlands. Because it's kind of an orphan piece over here, but obviously critical to 15th and corridor. So when you talk about, and I'm glad to see you're talking about. Greenway Connector to 15th Street, but we're also talking about the Greenway Connector to the existing path at the Pump House, correct?
That's correct, those two components we can include, and again, the language is broad enough, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good with that, so are we?
Question one, are we on track to complete this year?
No. I don't think so.
Yeah, so we're probably gonna have to expand this one out, and. I think we've already answered some course correction things, and here, one of the course corrections that needed to be made on this project was getting a consultant that was actually gonna focus on what we wanna accomplish. So I think city engineers has already answered that question where we're at, what action items do we need, you need to see out of this? Before we move on to the next. The next goal. I would almost ask Mr. Cobb what he needs from us.
I think right now, Mr. Cook, is I think, you know, obviously with this contract moving forward, I need, I need the input of the steering committee to make sure we've got the RFP up. And I think from there, that's all, just supportive counsel for, when we go through with the contract phase.
I think you, in a very short time period, at least in my opinion, you've, you've done more with this. Very short amount of time than has been accomplished in sets over several years before that, so.
Thank you.
I just wanna commend you and the other folks involved with this, but it, obviously you have a plan. And we're obviously committed to helping you. Engage that, so.
Like, so if we need to start on phase two, the actual design of the Reed Avenue, until we get the, the land side of, I would just say to spend that money at some point.
Mr. Seager, I'm on board with you, so we're, again, phase one, let's accomplish phase one, and it really is about getting, negotiating the concept plan, the B N S F. And what we heard from DJ, we've, you know, we talked about this P and E agreement that we have to sign before we go to design. He thinks that we don't have to do that now, he thinks that he can discuss it with them in a, in a formal manner, so that they buy off on the concept. And then we move forward with the design with phase two, we reengage a new consultant, and we start running, after that concept's been bought off from the B N S F. And that includes both the right-of-way and the concept plan itself.
Can we plan to have as one of our action steps moving forward, a Friday work session? Once this group's gotten, if this Quindall group's gotten going, gotten going on this project in three or. I'm thinking they'll be hitting the road running if we can get a Friday work session to bring.
We'll put it in the scope, we'll have a work session.
Great.
Yes.
Great idea.
Where are we at with negotiations now?
It's, it is, it's, to, to lack of a better term, it's dead in the water, 'cause it was left at the P and E agreement stage. And our other consultant simply was not advising us on where to go, what to do. And so now this is why we're gonna reengage this new, we're gonna, we're gonna reengage this, or engage a new consultant, and I terminated the contract.
I got one action item, and that's getting a work session scheduled to update you guys on the progress of the new consultant. And I'm not gonna tell you guys what to do, but I do want somebody to take ownership of this one, so I have a pen there. You might wanna use. To see who's gonna own that item, put your name next to that.
My name is right there, I'll put it right here.
Thanks for volunteering, Tom.
Alright, let me go to the next project. How many do you get to say up there? So, Snowmore Ranch, Charles, Brad Brooks is here with Core Public Utilities, Vicki, you check Public Works. And they will, they will tag team this one, on the updates, and I think there's three slides of this, Tom.
I'm, I'm just trying to make it.
Two slides.
Sorry, there you go.
Mr. President, members of council, Charles. Right now, we have a roll of recreation booths and bikes on the ground, it's here, we're making some slow progress. In fact, we've actually talked with the Office of State Lands, and we have tenderly received verbal approval of converting that access road to a quarry. Into an access that will access a new parking area for the Bellmore Ranch. Actually, just talked with Marty Rapp today to review our application, said it was one of the most complete ones that she has seen recently. So we just need to submit the formal application, that will be reviewed, I'm just waiting on one signature from a council member, who is aware of it yet, that's you. Which I will get that after the meeting, and that will be off in the mail for review. This would enable us to create a vehicular access way that would go to that new parking area. I think Mr. Cobb, can you provide any updates on Rich work?
Really, yes, and also the road work, so one of the things that, that was not included in their original contract was that design. So we are gonna put it, I'm gonna add that to their contract, and you're gonna see that in front of you soon. They were not, I guess they were not engaged to do that work, so I think that if we don't have that, that's not gonna help us. So they're gonna do the parking lot and the roadway as well, we'll do that as a separate piece. Who's gonna do that? Either Martin Martin or we can choose someone else, it's, it's entirely up to the group, or, 'cause the work is gonna be less than 200,000, we can select anybody. I wish I could do it myself, but I don't have the bandwidth right now.
So what you all will see in the upcoming future will be a contract.
Well, either a contract model or a new contract for the road parking lot design.
For the road parking lot design, but that will come on the heels of. The access piece being approved, which it's, it's very positive. Dominic Bravo is still serving as project manager, but of course, this is a project that needs a lot of different, different people to manage it, that's why Tom's here, that's why I'm here, and Dominic is here. So we can all make sure that we connect all the dots, so we can get this project forward. Next slide, Dominic is not.
Just a question on the road design and parking lot design, is that also gonna include the design for the parking lot for Path to the Bridge?
Yes, it would.
Yes, okay.
So there's some other items here regarding collaboration with state parks, as of 6:30, there were no other funds that were available. But they has indicated to me that there's an application that will be submitted to the Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Program, that will be next week. For about one point, or, or about $670,000, I could serve as assistance. The bridge cost and cost of well at that location for recreation, those will be utilized as a match for that grant. I believe Renee is on Zoom, if there are any additional questions, I mean, in regards to that, we have the.
I saw that today, so I don't forget, that's.
Regarding carbon capture, that MOU has approved in March 22, nothing has been born on that, so it's just an approved MOU, and nothing else has changed.
So, quick question, Charles, so we've heard nothing from the folks that we.
So, quick question, Charles. So we've heard nothing from the folks that we did an MOU with on how they plan to move forward with that?
It is my understanding that they have not reached back out to us since that MOU was signed to execute it. Let's check if we've heard anything or. Yeah. So it's ready and waiting if someone does wish to utilize those carbon credits. That includes the two slides on the.
So I've got the I've got the last which I wanted to give you a little more, a little more information on some of the options that we're looking at for the bridge itself. So I know they're really small, but it's basically three different things. We've got what we call the, this is the two structure option, which goes, the bridge is both the railroad and the maintenance road. And then unfortunately, as as we discussed earlier, I know that I've said with some of you, this is thirty five feet in the air. Once you get on the other side of the road, because you've got to be twenty six feet over the tracks. This is going downhill. It's it's over, it's it's almost thirty five to forty feet. So right now, the way they look at this is this concept is all accessible. And this is a, this is a retaining wall system that goes down and ties across the road. So and all of these options are expensive, so I just want to say this out loud. And the second one is option two, and it's a single structure that still lands within the UP railroad right away. So this one's less expensive, but this concept, we have a trail system then that would then have to cross across their maintenance road. So not ideal, both of these, they're both expensive. Then they both have their advantages and disadvantages. Again, this one's accessible. This one is not accessible. And our whole goal was to try to get accessibility to the Bellmore. So this is running about six point two percent. And again, this is under, this is four and a half all the way down. But again, they both can require retaining walls, a little bit different concept. And then the third option, we need to look at even moving this to another location to try to find something that's a little bit less should say grade change from north to south. Because I think the whole time is, I think we had some misconception from our design team that thought, oh, we're just going to pop over between the two. They thought it was just one pier or one, one, one high area to next higher. That terrain out there is not that way. So this is a series of switchback retaining walls that will be on either side, but in a much shorter area. And the the right away, there's a little bit shorter and the maintenance road is being used in the same way that this one is. So those are basically the three concepts and they've taken them to about a thirty percent level, if you can switch that, Jennifer. So and this is relative cost and I want to make sure that nobody runs with these because these don't include mobilization, they don't include inflation, they don't include construction here. What this is for is to give us a relative idea of the cost difference based on today. So we can kind of evaluate each of the options. Option one, double span, about two point seven million. Option two, the single span, about two point oh four million. And then option three of moving it is about two point three million. So you can see, none of these are cheap. And it's a very complex area that just says it's topography. And it creates a very complex situation. But again, we're trying to meet all those goals of accessibility and trying to get over that railroad. It's a tough one. And they're still working on it. I think they're leaning at, based on what what Dominic would like to do is to submit option two, which showed you that six point two percent slope where it goes into and between their maintenance road and the UP. I think my preference would be if we're going to do this, I'd like to go with option one. And let's make it accessible as far as we can, because I think, you know, on a taxpayer's investment, that's our whole goal. So I'm pushing for one, Dominic's pushing for two, will end up somewhere in it. We'll report back to you before we submit, but we're 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 almost there. It's expensive.
Let's say a service water, do you even want to?
Questions for?
Well, I was at a meeting with Dominic not long ago and he mentioned the idea of going back again to discuss and look at the underpass there in the under the railroad road. He brought it up. I thought that was.
I was going to.
Done away with.
So we we did completely eliminate it because after we started looking at the costs, we kind of, we 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 circled back. And he's right, because I made him circle back. I said, why don't we circle back and see how how bad is this going to be? So what we started looking at is five hundred and twenty five CFS, it's got to carry through that structure. So we haven't eliminated it, but it it's not real. It's, they say five hundred and twenty five CFS at the hundred year event, which means I would need about twelve acre feet of of a reservoir to hold back to create a new structure underneath. So if, I guess if I was playing my cards, I'd tell you, I think the chances of us having to make this happen are probably nil, which is why I didn't show you option four. We circled back as a group, as a design team, just to make sure that we were looking at and covering all bases. But I I don't know how feasible it's going to be. We're not giving up on it, but we're just putting it on the backbone. Just the feasibility. I I don't think I can find, I don't think we can do it. We need a reservoir permission state.
And how big was the reservoir to be?
Twelve acre feet. So if you think about the size, if you look at the new Christiansen Bridge we just finished and you look at that reservoir there, that's about twelve acre feet. So it's significant, significant.
And so if you did create the reservoir, which would be dry almost always.
Almost always, seventy five percent.
Would do you believe that the railroad would find that to be acceptable? Is that the communications got to that point?
Hasn't got to that point, because obviously they tried it once before. Council Labor and it didn't go very far. So we're not giving up, but we're imposed the option to them. But again, we just wanted to make sure we, we wanted, we wanted to go forward with those viable options. And it's not, it's not that.
And when you're referring to accessible, you're talking about handicap accessible?
Yes, sir.
So in my opinion, we should never ever proceed with anything that does not meet that standard.
That's 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 my opinion as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you help me understand option one a little better? You said.
Sure. Can you go back to that photo?
Is it? It's just a straight bridge across?
So it's a straight bridge across, but it's running at a slope. So imagine this. So it actually is running at four and a half percent down. So we cross this to twenty six feet and the bridge is actually on a slant coming down. And then you, there's two abutments here and one here. And then this is all retaining wall on either side. It's built up, because this is out of the ground. So you've got a fill slope and a retaining wall that are combined. And finding that balance, I mean, that's what we can cut some cost out of using a combination of fill and and retaining.
There's no switchbacks there?
You could do that as well. This concept I talked about it with the design team today. And we could do a switchback option, doesn't matter. It's just illustratively for now. As we, we haven't finished the concept, but it could be done this way or or straight out, either way.
Which would be better for the handicap, just a straight shot?
Either way, I think either way is fine, because we would have, we would have a platform at each of the turns that would widen out. So I've seen them, they're both very effective. It is, I think now it comes down to cost and and planning what what the what the most cost effective option.
We're only going to do this once.
Yes.
Yeah. So. This part through it.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
List here, Oria.
Do my best.
Okay, is there any possibility of using the project managers that we're using on the Reed Avenue corridor to perhaps have that negotiation with the railroad for this project?
We certainly could. But again, so this, this one's UP and the other one's BNSF. So we, I think we might even engage a different team or maybe a sub team of this one. Because this firm is pretty large. Like I said, they're Chicago based. So we could certainly ask them.
So they may have a UP expert.
But we, but we do have rail pros on this that were engaged with Martin Martin to help us. And if I, I guess if I say that it starts going a little bit awry, I'm not afraid to terminate another contract and move on. So we'll, we'll, we'll see how this goes. I'll give them a chance because they did bring a rail expert aboard.
What was, what was the match amount that we're going to need for the six hundred and seventy thousand dollar Wyoming rec grant? She can speak, Charles.
Oh.
Every needs online. Yeah, she is. Let me just, I'm going to stop sharing my screen for just a minute. Just, yeah, Renee, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah. Okay, so it's a ten percent match, but you get extra points for going over. So if it's, that's why we're kind of budgeting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the match. This is a pre-application that we're submitting tomorrow. So if we are selected to move to the next round, I I think there's room to flesh out the the project a little bit more. But it's only a ten percent match.
And it would be, and we could use the bridge and the road as part of that match?
I believe so. That's what I need to check with outdoor recreation, just with the timeline that we have. But I think moving forward as we're spending money, depending, it's a pretty quick turnaround. This, these are state ARPA funds that we're applying for. And so the turnaround, we should know by the end of this year if we're funded or not.
I guess. Renee, I'm guessing, are you the one that does the slipboard applications also?
Correct. Yes. Yes, I am.
Okay, so you know why we were rejected on in June or the slipboard on this? Did they give us a reason why they didn't?
The city was not brought in at that time. That was something that Dominic and Darren had done. So I I really have only seen rudimentary levels of that grant. I don't think it was. I don't think the project had come together cohesively enough for SLIB I I as a detail oriented piece. So that's my understanding. There's probably a good chance we can reapply.
Well, I'm just, now you really have my curiosity up. So we, there was a slipboard application done in the name of the city by people that don't work for the city without your knowledge.
My understanding, it wasn't a SLIB application, it was an EDA application, not SLIB. It was environmental. It it was EDA.
It was.
I don't know, I don't know anything about a SLIB application, but I know.
Was it on behalf? Sorry, was it on behalf of the city?
I don't know that they even got, what I saw, when you, when you submit, I I was not a part of that at all. I don't believe it was. I think they were applying as a nonprofit.
Okay, I was just going to say, because that's really problematic in the grant world to have people applying for grants in your name if your grant manager's not aware of it, so.
I don't believe the city was attached to that one with the EDA.
And then I guess with the handicap accessibility, I was really, I'm really concerned about, we're thirty five feet in the air. We have a ADA rise over run requirement that I am really curious how we would meet that from thirty five feet in the air. I mean, this bridge would have to be really extended at the end.
Scale of this, this, this is three hundred feet right here.
Okay.
We're running at four and a half percent.
Four and a half percent grade across. And then my other question was the maintenance road. We, in option one, it goes over the maintenance road. Option two, you said it, we would have to do switchbacks and we would have to still get across the road.
Yes.
Which would become an ADA issue, I would think.
And and liability on our side, because I I mean, that's, that's where I'm at with this. I I felt the whole time I really encouraged the team to get over the other maintenance road because we, I need to get over the right away so that we, we don't create a liability, we we will eliminate. So this, although this is much cheaper, I mean, but in the end, I I think if we just, but again, they're going to look at the concepts and start talking to the railroad. But I, my my preference is is we move this way and whether we use switchbacks or whatever we do, they can keep it accessible and just get ourselves away from any interface with the railroad as as much as we can.
And is the the maintenance road belongs to the railroad?
Yes.
As well. Okay, that was another question I had. And then I also wanted to find out, I'm just curious, if we're going to, going to hire. I just I I'm not really, I don't really understand why we're using Visit Cheyenne as a project manager for this, because I'm not sure that that's really their expertise. So and or their bandwidth. So how? How did that come about and how can we get to a point where we have a project manager that can actually do this and has the time to?
So.
I have an answer for that. Mr. Seeger, it's all yours. I I'm introducing a resolution. I'm the resident here to hire a special projects manager. Most of, most of work will be six penny oriented, but there will be other projects, Bellmore, Fifteenth, Reed Avenue. I'm very concerned as well. We have a non city people managing projects for us.
Multi-million dollar projects.
Multi-million dollar projects and we hear from them. Maybe quarterly. So that resolution should be introduced.
I I just know they're busy.
The follow up, we, we, we've so Renee, I don't want to speak on your behalf, but Renee and I have worked together to to change this. So Dominic has been assisting really with me and I. Renee and I have been running these projects. That's what's been going on. That's why we're moving forward. Dominic is helping us, but the the manager is Renee and myself.
But that's probably why we need a project manager, because you guys don't have the bandwidth either, quite honestly.
We're, we're, we're doing it and we're functioning fine. I believe we're moving it forward. And you can see, we're already here. So I meet regularly with this group now. In fact, we meet every other week. I meet directly with them online. And so I'm I'm managing this one. Renee has been help co-managing the Fifteenth Street rail experience with me. So that has helped tremendously. In fact, she's run most of that one. I've run this one. So we split the tasks up and that's how it's operated. Renee, do you have anything to add on this one?
No, I I think you you summed it up pretty well. I think we realized, it, working with Dominic, he's got connections and he's, he's got the time to, I think, chat and and move this forward in a, in a handshake sort of manner. However, we are restricted to city policies and procedures. And that's kind of why Tom and I jumped in to take over the the project management piece to make sure that we're in compliance with our own policies and procedures and make sure that we are pushing the needle forward on both of these projects. So that that pretty much sums it up.
And it does work. So this is the way it's supposed to work. The consultant is our, you know, we're, we're guiding and steering. They're advising and moving. So we, I have a decision log I made them do. So we go through all action items every two weeks. It's all on the board, including accessibility. It's all lined out. Anybody can look at the decision log, the project's moving forward. So we we're effectively, I I think it's, we're very effective with this because we're partnering together. When consultants and we're going, you know, in concert with us, this works. And we don't need to hire an outside person for to do it. You know, in the case of Reed, it's a specialized situation where we rely on the consultant to help us make decisions to move forward. And the previous consultant didn't do that. That's why it didn't work. So now we have a new consultant we're looking at. They're, they're experts in this. They're going to help guide us. So they're managing the project with us. We're doing it from the city side. They're doing it from the other side.
So I'm hearing resistance on your part to hire an outside project manager.
What, because I, I found after losing control of these things, that if I don't at least touch it, I feel like, I feel like I need to be involved so that we know which direction we're moving. And so that's all I'm saying to you. I mean, it's ultimately someone else's decision. I mean, it's it's not mine, but I I'm fully capable of doing this. I've I've managed thirty projects before once. I can, I can handle this. It's not.
And I don't think anybody's questioning that.
It's not an issue.
But I just think that you are so busy and we understand that you're understaffed. And Renee's a one-person shop as well. So it's not like you're not capable. It's just, you have the bandwidth without losing your mind. And I don't want to.
I I don't feel like I'm out of control now. And now that I've got a senior on board, the the what really gets us from my office's standpoint is development view. This is what really bothers, I'm the, I'm the fun. So if I'm now been passing this more and more to her to take over and it's pointed, it's going to really function well. She, that's going to be her job. I'm going to stick to the bigger picture and then steering the boat, if for lack of a better term. So yeah, so I'm trying to steer the boat and 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 look at the bigger picture.
One, one question. From a BOP perspective, would you develop your well field out there? Houses going to, or are they near each other?
We're talking down clear at the south end, right?
What about our cattle production, ranch production, egg thing going on out there? Is this gonna impact that at all?
Will this impact our cattle production or ranching?
The biggest thing with catalysts, grass, and we start at the eastern end of the ranch and move west normally. The last year we grazed twenty-four hundred head. This year we're grazing fifteen hundred and seventy-five. And that's merely because the grass quality is, is less than efficient. So uh, the grass and the cattle will not be affected until we put out an RFP to raise the root passing. That may be affected, but it's, that's a small contract. So I would say though.
I ran a lot of mountain bike trails my years where the cows were there.
Yeah. That's discussed a lot of those mountain bike trails and stuff. You leave the cows alone, the cows will leave you alone.
Sometimes a great group plot of the trails is a problem, but just go.
Can we add to the Bellwater Ranch? I've been in contact with Dominic throughout the summer and I know he's been really busy about a tour of the Bellwater Ranch. He was trying to set one up. So if we could set one up for council members that haven't set it out there yet. And then I was also wondering um, if it might be possible to get ahold of the gentleman that is doing the carbon asset network? Because I was curious about what type of a revenue that would produce if we had been able to get that set up for that with the carbon asset network.
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna contact the carbon asset network.
I can tell you that the purpose of the, the money was to improve the, uh, the quality of the grass, not to do other projects.
Right.
So if, if we got it, our job would have been to try to be the grass better. So it created more cattle, so it, it held more carbon in the ground. So it's not like the money they gave you, it's not a different.
Right, but it would be good to know because that's a lot of acreage.
It was thirty dollars acre.
Yeah, but we have a lot of acres, right?
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
Over. If you count the states, but that really is a December.
One, one final point, and it's probably about the road. There's a lot of signs on the branches that I think are interested for visitors. There's old Indian fire rings out there. I think there's other tourism type opportunities that we have on the ranch. I don't know how we do that, who's gonna do that, what, what year we're gonna do that, but they're out there, so.
I have been discussing with, with Next Bear about utilizing their access roads and we're able to do that. We just need to put signs up that says something like, do not touch the turbines. They, they don't really have a problem with you being next to them. They don't want you playing on and stuff like that. The biggest issue out there with opening up to public use is how do we deal with, with residents? How do we deal with uh, police sheriff's deputies? Who manages that, who ensures public safety, who ensures who meets in the evening? Are they staying there? Are they camping? What about trash? There's a lot of different uh, I haven't even considered when we have the, the opening. I know National Forest Service at Medicineville, they have an agreement with the Albany County Sheriff's to provide limited reinforcements that those are having because they could be explored, open up other areas of the ranch, but it's all the mother, I have seen for consideration.
We still do have a ranch manager out there, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That lives, that lives on site?
That's correct. Mister Conker, yeah, is the ranch manager. He works in the wintry, works in street county, in the summer, he's at the ranch school.
But it's a big ranch to try and figure out who's spending the night and who's not.
And he doesn't get that. He doesn't have the authority to do anything to anyone if they are on the ranch or whatever. He just calls the sheriff's.
So that's how we're dealing with it right now. So will that, then at some point, then we'll need an MOU with the sheriff's department or someone?
I think that's.
Way down the road. First, we have to get access.
Or we could end it.
Team fans sold out of here, Rob's still the secret.
So I don't think I need to ask the question because I don't think we're on track to get boots on grounds, bikes on ground this year. So the answer, question one, let me know. I think we have those course corrections that are already being made and things that we're already working on. What I have for action items is getting to tour the Bellwater for people that haven't been out to see everybody. Charles has already volunteered for that, hiring a project manager, which it looks like there's some discussion that still needs to happen, but comes with secret, it's already started this. I'm gonna put your name on it. And then I, I will reach out to the carbon asset work and see if we get some of those questions answered. I'll get that back to the government body via email. And then the last one is, we did, you gonna take that one? All right, uh, city engineer will work on the contract for road and parking design. So it has to happen.
Is that gonna come through as a modification to the existing contract?
It can because we'll fulfill up procurement. Again, it's not a current thing. So I'll probably have to hire a separate one or them at a separate contract. And it's, it's, I'm not the TJ about this, but it's, it's awkward because again, it was brought up and I didn't say it to come to my office, which is what Renee and I were talking about. So.
All right, let's do one more goal and then we'll take a bio break. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the city engineer is to sit down and.
Um, okay, uh, writing an ordinance to pass it to the governing body processes. So thanks to John Brody and Stephanie, thank you. We, we, we do have a draft complete now. Um, the ordinance has been drafted. We want to go through another internal review before we, we, externally. Um, but Stephanie, I think we're close.
Yes.
That on West July 31st, I think we made it on, probably with mid-August, maybe I think we're about close. It's closing. Just gonna, can I just, let me just go to mine on this. It might be a little bit easier. Except, sorry, go back to the first one.
Sorry.
So just a quick, the update on the surface water plan. I don't know what that meant to this group. Um, what surface plan, I, I don't know what it meant, but what, what I did was I already had this as part of the direct master plan. So the municipal code and the UDC modifications for stormwater ranch, they're being updated and revised under that direct master plan. And that's gonna be done August of twenty twenty.
Tom, I think I might have been the one who talked about that. That was the plans. We understood what the cost would be for when we implement this, what would that cost? We need to have that, that plan updated. It sounds like that's.
Okay, that's okay. All right. Go to the next one, please. Thanks, John. So like I said, the direct ordinance is complete. It was about obviously. Um, right now we're looking at rate options and, and we're, we're evaluating this. What we're looking at is something a little bit different. We're looking at a zone-based option where we include then, Vicky and I are getting together and we're trying to come up with the O and M costs. We're looking at the capital improvement costs, meaning major projects that we'd be looking at. And then what would be money for grant matches under this zone-based fee? We're, we're gonna, we're gonna look at what we call equivalent residential units. So that it's very, it's very, how should I say? It's equal. So we're, we're gonna take, play everything back to a residential role so that a commercial business would, would, it understands what they are equivalent to with, with a residential. It's, it's, it's gonna be a lot simpler than I'm making it sound right now. Um, and then lastly, we're engaging an independent third-party consultant to complete that rate study because I don't want to be just the only one looking at this and Vicky doesn't either. And neither does Jean. So we'll, we'll bring in a third party that's gonna reference all this together. We're gonna come up with kind of our skeleton plan based on what we know. And then I have to do a separate contract with this third party to do a rate study. Uh, and that's, this, this type of firm, it's, it's their business, meaning they're experts doing this and they've done it everywhere. So they'll, they'll incorporate our ideas into this and, and bring.
I think that's one of those current projects, so, not you.
So I, I report that when it comes to the timing on this, right now, the plan is maybe to introduce it like the first of November. So we're finishing the, uh, the final draft of the, the ordinance, uh, the, the rate study. All that stuff should be done. So we should have a, we should have it ready for introductions, like public meetings in November. We still shouldn't be able to finish this by the end of November here. So it definitely works out right. Michelle.
So I'm assuming that we would bill this through the, our, the water bills because I, we don't really have any other monthly bill that we sent out.
No, we will not do that because Brad will tell us that's not the right answer. This, this will not be in the water bill, but we will have a line on water bill from the city.
Okay.
We have to be very careful that the BOP likes the way we say that. It's not, it's not a BOP charge. It will be a certain charge on.
And it will actually say surface water utility, but you're whatever.
It will not say utility.
So it's, we'll say.
Surface water assessment or something like that.
Surface water runoff.
So if we, if we, if this is introduced at the beginning of November, you think it'd be finished by the end of December? Does that mean it's like happy new year, here's a new charge for you? Does it start in January?
April first or something like that. I don't.
April first, right around tax time. That's not good.
Yeah, I, I don't exactly. Was that?
If you gotta do a rate study and have you hired a consultant?
It could be a while.
I think that's right.
Well, I think we can beat it here, but I think like, I think realistically, it may be more ready around that January timeframe. So we, we, with the rate study completed and then introduced to you, to you.
It's a little story of my thought.
What, what are we anticipating this to look like? Are we going to have employees that actually go out and work on Dry Creek, Crow Creek and the hundreds of stormwater detention ponds we have? Are we going to have a staff? Are we going to hire it out? What are we? And what are we thinking of going to cost per year? What, what are we trying to achieve?
Okay, so just a piece of that real quick. What are we, what are we expecting to bring in? Okay, they're all great questions that I, I've looked at and there's, there's a multitude of ways that you can do it, you know, and I, and I guess from my perspective, I, I, I would really like to, I guess, when I'm trying to start this out, like, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna under-promise and over-achieve. Okay, so meaning, I think if we're gonna do this, we have to do it right and take it in steps. So I, I, in my opinion, and this is just Tom Probst's opinion, I think we need to start a little bit smaller. And so I envision this group, it's been right now the way it's written. It's under the city engineers office. This would be two to three people. And what I would really like to do is hire the stormwater engineer to actually run this group. So be a part of that. He or she's positioned to do that. And then two people underneath, it would be technicians that would be basically monitor and create these maintenance projects, the major maintenance, just like we do with construction. So then a portion of this money would then also go to Vicky's group that does the minor maintenance. So the minor maintenance is just like with roadways, right? They have potholes for roadways. This is for the minor stuff, the stuff that we can do with smaller crews that Vicky is just, is, is part of her daily business, but then we don't get quite funded enough. So that group does minor maintenance, this group does major maintenance. So we would do contract, larger stuff outside of the realm that is done by public works. So that's the way I sort of saw this as the first step to this. Now, how much? So we, as I said, is there's two parts to this, right? There's three. We really have to look at what operation maintenance costs we're gonna be looking at. So Vicky and I are looking in depth at, trying to figure out what that would be. So, and what then ultimately that's gonna determine what this feeds. We also have to look at how big a bite do we want to take on capital improvements from you? How big are projects? You know, I've got, just like roadways, I probably have in the neighborhood, and I'm just gonna, I'm throwing this out there. We probably have forty to sixty million dollars worth of work that we could do over the next thirty years just in drainage. So, but how, how big do we want to do this? What, what, what's realistic? And as I, I told this group before, just like with what we're having issues with labor, with contractors, we really don't want to oversaturate the market, right? I'm already there. I can only put out so much work because they're just not getting it done. This is gonna be the same way. So I really want to try to deliver what we, what we promised and, and really, really achieve our goal here of making some maintenance work that really counts. So, and then the grant matches, that's such an important part because right now we don't really have it. We, we budgeted in the past about five hundred thousand a year, but we were able to do a drainage. Now we've upped it to about a million, if I'm not mistaken, on our last one. So that's gonna help us. But again, we need to go, to go after a big project because it's gonna cost, we just, for instance, if I do a half a mile of Dry Creek just in dredging alone, you're, you're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it would take me ten years to dredge all of our drainages at, at the curve, at two hundred and fifty thousand a year. So we, again, I think I'd ultimately like to be able to touch everything within a ten-year period at very, at the worst so, just like roads, I tried to touch ten percent of roads. I'd like to touch ten percent of all of our drainage and, and fix all the problems. We have their stuff everywhere, everywhere. Um, I don't know if I answered it the right way, but it's, it's a, you could, you could go really high or really low. And so four dollars, we were looking at four dollars. We, we did some projections at four dollars a residential house. I think it was four dollars, generates about five point seven million dollars a year.
Residential unit, right? So like at every apartment.
We took, what, what, it would be four dollars for, uh, this is an, an average for a residential house in the city of Cheyenne. At four dollars, we could generate about five point seven million.
That's four dollars a month.
That's four dollars a month.
That's corporate.
That includes all our corporate, anything that we would, that, right. But that, what I'm giving you is this is what the major impact is to a resident. It'd be about that four dollar mark. Now, Vicky and I still have to meet and talk about this O and M budget because is it enough? I don't know. It was just our first cut at saying, how bad would this be? So I'm reporting early information to you, but about four dollars generates five point seven million. And again, it would have to pay the salaries of the, of at least a portion of the stormwater engineer, um, and then those two other folks, the administrative costs. BOP, you would have a share, Vicky's portion, and then these two other pieces for capital improvements.
So it could be more for businesses because you're using a residential unit equivalency when you calculate for business?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I think before we, we address this, we really need to have this run in the corner. We need to be able to talk about this is our plan. This is what staffing is going to look like. This is what our goals will be on an annual basis. You know, I, I don't know if, maybe you can tell us, we even have an inventory of all of the detention ponds around.
Very interesting that you asked that question. I now have about seventy-five, almost eighty percent of them complete. The interns that I hired this summer, they not only took care of ADE ramps, they now have inventoried all the detention ponds that were accessible. Now, the ones that were fenced in, um, I did not make them do that. So they did not, we tried to contact folks, but all the ones that were public accessible are easements. We took care of all of those. It's these extra ones that were fenced in that we couldn't do. For instance, Effie Warren Air Force Base, can't get onto. Um, so I have an inventory. I have a condition of the outlet structure. Um, I have measurements. I have slopes. Um, so they did a lot of work this summer to start.
How many are there?
Um, I believe it's around four hundred. Well, we have eight thousand accessible ramps within the city of Cheyenne, now eight thousand two hundred and twenty-two, which they have now.
Interns.
They are amazing. Um, three, three people did a great job this summer.
Hope we can get some next summer.
I hope so.
Anyway, I guess, I guess my comment would be internally, we need to run this in the corner, decide we're gonna have a stormwater engineer, two people, and this is gonna be their job description.
So, right. It, it was, so Mr. Seagrave, I just tried to come up with a concept to try to get us going. And then obviously, as, as a governing body, steer the direction and I just, it was just my first impression or based on the information that I had and where this group wanted to go, and that was just where I first headed. So there was nothing to set in stone. It was just to get us started.
When you look at great options, you're just looking to make it revenue neutral in order to pay for services and how much work you could put out there per year.
That's correct. And then obviously, that's what I, what I talked about with the grant match, that's the access. And then the capital improvement about what we could do for work per year that would be outside of, of, of the budget I talked about for Public Works.
Just a real quick question, when you, when you do a road improvement project where there are culverts involved, we analyze water flow and the size of the culverts, the things that are needed for that, or would that be this new?
We, we, we do that here. So this, the, the group that does it, whether if it's a consultant one, that they would work in concert with the stormwater drainage engineer. In this case, I've got two of them, so Kelly and Jean worked with me, we talked about this. For instance, I'll give you the example, we have Whitney Ranch Offsite. Whitney Ranch Offsite is a public private partnership that we're working with the developer on, but also we're collecting water from Van Buren. And so their equivalent size of pipe was a twenty-four inch to carry what they needed to the creek. We, we, we looked at this and we upsized it, it's now a forty-two inch pipe, which I'll be able to carry the fifty-year event for all the offsite dischords. So we're going to take care of some of the stuff pre nineteen eighty-five before we have detention facilities and, and grab some of that water.
So I don't think we're on track this year.
Maybe.
I have one question if I can add, I just offer, I mean, we do this every day. We have a good idea of what it takes to do our system and our size of pipe, and we'd be glad to just, if you want, offer input on.
Right, I'd love it. Okay, well, so you do it every day. We just got it started, we are just getting started.
Maybe able to offer some good help for you.
Perfect, thank you.
I don't, I don't know that I heard course corrections, but I did hear some additional things that we need to do. That's, for lack of a better term, a marketing plan that describes staffing, the cost of services, the cost of staffing, so if we take phone calls, talk about it intelligently.
Well, I think we need to do a market at long before that because we were slammed on the two point five percent.
Take the phone calls that I had to take last time.
Yeah, we don't either.
Yeah. We have just volunteered to do this.
I thought I should be last, thank you.
One thing I'd like to say is that we have a fifth penny election coming up. That is extremely important for the city to lose a fifth penny based on this five point seven million would be tragic. So I caution that as we move forward, that maybe this isn't our priority. And so after that fifth penny, that one comes to you.
Are we going to do any public? I know, I'm guessing that we probably cannot campaign for the fifth penny, but are we going to do some public education about that? Because I don't think people really understand.
Yes, so we wanted to wait until after the primary, primary election and because it's not, it's not all in the country. So we wanted to wait till after we have, we are already setting up meetings both in the county and the city. We'll do that as soon as, we wanted to do it the week that it's open, but unfortunately, I'm out of town for, for that week. So we're, we're looking for a week where we can do multiple things, probably once we get out the public safety center out in the county at Archer. And then we, we've also volunteered and I have gone out to this small town in the past and provided information as well. Again, we can't advocate, but we can educate.
Because public validating starts in three weeks, right?
Some type of P, Vicky, some, I'm sorry, Michelle, some type of P S A video or something that you could put on the city website, I think would be extremely helpful, then you could put that out on blast.
Michael Skinner and Kat are working, we have already met on that. We are putting together this, basically the same campaign that we put together for the city. There'll be stuff on our social pages, there'll be, we're going to, I'm going to talk on radio, we're trying to get TV, we're trying to all those things, we need to release all of that.
Can we get a brochure, like for counseling copies?
Um, yes, we were, we're going to do a brochure where we have a September seventh is the cutoff date for everybody to provide their input for that brochure. We'll put that together and we're, we are not going to mail it this year. We're going to do it as we get the sixteen campaign, which was provided electronically, but we will be printing it out and sending at the foster tent.
So we'll be able to get some.
Yes. We're seeing that.
We'll start again at twenty-five after with the county pockets. Our next goal and I can get some of the directors that might be willing to work with the marketing plan on that to put your name on the board that would be awesome. We'll start up again.
Let me get my shirts.
Will that be five years' life?
All right.
Yes.
All right. It's great to talk about county pockets, the fun subject here. So at your work session, there was a goal identifying properties that are 75% surrounded by the city. I mean, this time we focused on really looking at the pockets that are 100% surrounded by the city. And we've identified that there are 65 county pockets that are in that area. That's comprised of, lose about 100, this actually, I should say, 65 individual pockets. So that's about 135 different landowners. So we've identified that as our first focus for annexations. What we've looked at in the way of communication with the individuals potentially affected by annexation is we really worked hard with the media to create public outreach for us through CHWN, Cowboy, the Cowboy State Daily, that's the online news source, and also the Wyman Tribune Eagles. They've run a couple of different formative articles on the annexations and some news stories which has sparked the conversation and discussion with the property owners. So that's what goes into our tools we have in the toolbox. I've jumped right into that bottom one here. Some items we use as tools include the city website, like creating forums and different multimedia on the woods. If you haven't been to our city website, we have a page dedicated to annexations to give folks information. It is www.shayacity.org/annexation. There you can find all of your information regarding how much your property assessment is going to change, how much of that revenue goes to the city, and then also what you can expect coming to the city. Can you connect water? Can you connect the sewer? Will your current use of your land be allowed to continue? All those questions are answered there. Just last week, we rolled out a new form on the website where property owners can voluntarily register their current use of their land, so we're aware of what's going on in that property. So for example, if we have a piece of land where they're using it for horse boarding, they could say, hey, we're using it for horse boarding right now. They can provide evidence of that horse boarding, and then we will have that as a baseline in the future, in the event they want to change that property, or in the event someone complains that it is unjust. In the case.
Yes, the reason for that is estate law says if you annex somebody, that all of your nonconforming uses are grandfathered for eternity. So we've got to get them in writing so that we know what those nonconform uses are. And then if they're not, if as long as they use it once a year, then that continues to go. But if the horse dies and it's a year they don't have a horse, then that grandfathering is gone. So we've got to, we've got to identify what those nonconforming uses are so that we can, because one won't be here, you know, 20 years from now or 30 years from now, so that there'll be a record of what those look like.
Right. In addition, only for a second bullet point there, we have made changes to municipal code that were related to small wastewater system, septic systems, and also the definition of development action. That was.
Yes, we did.
Yep, and that was just approved last Monday.
Was there a lot of public comment on that? Or any?
So with this update.
Rules.
Correct. When this update was initially published, there was a proposed changes to the UDC. Instead, those changes were kept at Title I.
Charles, the 65 properties that were identified as being under 75% surrounded. Can you kind of give a breakdown by board?
I can provide that information to all. Yeah, I can pull that information together so we know where they are, but they are scattered.
And it's on that website.
Correct. I believe it is on that website. But yes, we do have a lot of different pockets that are scattered in a lot of different areas. There's some up north. There's a majority of the area between Ridge and College, I mean, up the US 30. There are several, but southern area of the community. Next slide. So regarding starting the annexation process. At this time, with through our public outreach, we have received a lot of comments from different individual property owners. Right now, we have had 14 responses. A majority, a majority of them happened as of late as August 8th. So we've kind of had a settling of comments where people have reached out to us. Of those 14 responses, we've had at least 10 people that are supportive of wanting to be the first ones in, where they're excited that the city would annex them and they would remove their obstacle of paying approximately $15,000 to go through that process. We have had three folks that have said, we just wanted the more information, but generally we're okay with that. But we've had one person that's been absolutely opposed to annexation. One of the items we've looked at for cost savings is utilizing in-house services for preparation of the annexation maps. Just recently, Jack Dudley, our former city surveyor, has been hired back on part-time. He is creating annexation maps in the annexation ordinances for some of our lowest hanging fruit, the easiest properties to annex. I need to check base with him again to see where he's at in that process. Unfortunately, every once in a while, he gets pulled in different directions for other surveys that have to occur. Fire stations, 15 streets, various, a couple of other things. But he has talked to me that he's excited for this process to move forward and is not envisioning it to be too much, too time consuming. So we're hoping to still stay on track and be able to start some annexations by the end of September. Again, for the staff cost, cost, we've accomplished this goal. There's been $175,000 that has been earmarked to pay for the cost of annexations. We'll continue to utilize the in-house services for Jack Dudley. I mean, in the event, we need to look for some independent contracts for other annexations to lessen his workload. We will explore that as well. That's the update on county pockets.
So I'm just wondering, are you planning to do some community meetings? Or is it all going to be just through the public service announcements and one-on-one?
The answer is yes, all be above. While we, we have reached out to individual property owners and they have contacted us to guide them through the annexation process, we've answered a lot of questions for them. But when we do identify areas that we targeted in the first round, we will have a training meeting. We will direct mail them, we'll invite them to the table for a conversation so they truly understand the benefits of annexation.
And what's involved in, is there, is it mostly paperwork that's involved? Or is it, I mean, what's the process for annexation? If somebody says, yeah, I want to be in, is it just a matter of them doing an application basically and paperwork? Is there a legal process that that homeowner would normally have to go through that we're going to be walking them through?
No, not necessarily. We're still planning on proceeding with the city initiated annexation. But it is nice to understand and know that we would have a property owner that is not going to be in opposition. Although they are more than 75% surrounded, their opposition does not automatically negate an annexation under state statute, knowing that they are supportive of it and they can come to the meetings of the governing body and express support. That is worth a lot. So that is what we're looking for by people that are in favor of being annexed.
So Michelle, I think you answered your question. You don't have to do anything. So the city's going to do all the work. We're going to, we're going to initiate the annexation with all the paperwork. We'll do all the filings. We're going to record it and they're going to be in the city. We're initiating all these, the ones that are surrounded 100%.
Well, we need to vote on every.
Just like we have.
So for those that are coming in, kicking in screaming that are surrounded by 100%.
They're welcome to say their opposition, the statute formally, their protests cannot affect the outcome of the.
Because I was contacted today by one of our county commissioners who said that there's a very, very, very active Facebook group going right now against annexation.
Yeah, I've heard about that, but I've not seen that.
Hey, Mr. President, I would like to switch committees before we start doing. Let me just say this about that, no.
I, and I guess I, I was under the impression, and maybe this was either from the radio program that we did, or maybe I may have seen it in America, that we, when we were talking about annexing, we were really talking about starting with the base area first. Is that not accurate?
That's sort of been the mayor's minute or any discussion that I've had. Then I think there might be an effort to do something along those lines by council.
We've talked about it. Yeah, I mean, it's been discussed, but I would, I, I guess I wasn't ever under the understanding that it was part of this effort.
Okay, so that would be actually different than this effort?
Yeah. The base is not surrounded by the city, so.
If we're clarification, it's 65 county pockets, which represent 127 independently owned tax parcels.
And I did have a question, Charles, you basically covered it, but when you were talking about the, and the mayor touched on it a little bit too, but just with the, the uses basically have to be, you know, have to be certified. So I mean, they, you know, they report something. So how do we go back and check that they're not reporting one thing and, and doing something else? Because I mean, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have some of those. So what, how are we doing that? Or how would we plan to do that?
Great question. What we've done is we've created the form on our website where they can upload whatever evidence they want. If it says staff will, we may contact you for clarification. So if there's something that just doesn't appear to be right, and what we will have is a staff there will go out, write a document, documentation as well, then we will leave it there to see if there's an airwork in the middle to clearly identify what that uses.
And then just to follow up on that, so then based after, after you, you speak to them about that. If, if staff feels there's a need for that, then is it staff's then responsibility to say, okay, yeah, no? Or does that come back to us for the, okay, yeah, this is, this is an unconforming use?
That's a great question. Ultimately, the way we envision it is it will be staff's interpretation that will define what that uses. That's how we do that right now when there's a problem in the city, where you may receive a zoning complaint where someone asks or states, hey, this is, this property is being used illegally. We have to make our best judgment and then we will document that, that use.
Should we expect 65 annexation processes coming through or 127?
Can we do a block? Regarding the number of processes, we're going to try to logically group them together. So we might have an accounting pocket, so that's a number one, which might represent the group of folks that voluntarily want to come in, because maybe their, their septic system is failing right now. They want to connect to the city sewer. We also will look at geographically, so we can group them in areas that are relatively close together. So when you do hold those community meetings and have that outreach, people are all traveling to a focal point. We'll start with Ward 3.
I would almost, I would almost honestly rather start with some of those that maybe not seen, maybe the most contentious, but I'm almost wondering if, if, if this isn't the type of situation where we'd want to take the low hanging fruit first. I mean, I, I don't know.
And that is our, our next, next goal. Now that we have the municipal code amendment done, is to go out and get that low hanging fruit, begin another media campaign. What we've done is we created that new land use registration form, which we haven't kicked out to the media yet. But that is in the works, we can start those. Once we identify where the city surveyor is at with his workload, that's really great to fight our timeline.
I would like to know what the contentions are so that going forward, we're able to.
Check out Facebook, there's a lot of them on there.
So that way we can show that the value of the services that they're getting for basically no cost to them at all.
It's just what I've heard is the big thing is they just don't want to be in the city.
That's right.
You know, I don't think there's a real problem with anything that's going on because we're not asking to really change anything. We're not required to do anything. They don't have to hook up the sea waters for right away, so that they just physically don't want to be in the city. That's, that's, I think, the contention.
The two that I've heard is, is the taxes that are carried within city limits. And then the second one is following city ordinances.
So if their sewer system is failing, or their septic system is failing, will, they will still have to pay to connect to city water? Is there, okay.
That's right.
Well, actually Brett said it's free.
Yeah, if there's one that is failing, they would have to connect to city water. So now there are some properties that are under previous reimbursement agreements from other developments from back in the day. They would still have to follow suit and pay towards reimbursement agreements. There are some properties that are there, there's some people we have contacted, the septic systems are failing and they're aware of that and they know that's something they have to do. The one benefit about it being a city initiated annexation is it saves that property owner approximately $12,000 in fees and survey work, because that's what it typically costs the average citizen to, to have an annexation map prepared and go through the process.
The other difference, Michelle, too, is that not only do they don't have to do that, but they don't have to bring the full property up to city standards, just look up the city water or city sewer yet. So we don't consider that to be development action, that's a humanitarian thing. So that's what we just fixed. So now if there's, if their septic system fails, it could go on to that and still not have to spend the $100,000 to pay. So we're trying to be as gentle as we can in the process, because we know they don't. If they want to be in city, they would already be there, right?
When the, when the property changes hands, then if, so if they come in under this agreement and let's say that they run on a septic system or whatever, when the property changes hands, then is that when sidewalk and other things kick in or it never kicks in?
No, the requirement for public improvement, curbed better sidewalks, repaving, that would be the same as any other single family development that exists on a subcenter book right now. You can get a permit to add windows, do an addition to your house, those types of items. But the moment you want to change it to something that's more intense, like a multifamily unit, want to rezone it to commercial, you want to subdivide it and have to clean up a lot, that is when your public improvements would be triggered. So again, on that annexation website, it does talk about the additional assessment. For example, if you have a $325,000 house right now, your current county assessment per year is $2,073. It would only go up by $154 to $2,227 per year. So again, it's a small amount and what you'll be eligible for is police response, fire response, also the other city services that we offer.
So with sanitation, the way we're not too, so.
They can already service those areas. They can service anything with the city if someone wishes, but they're inside the city.
So but after we, after we annex, and if they're using fire or something like that, they have to pull out, we do it.
Yes.
Okay. Questions? So I think this one, we are on track to meet the defined goals and that was to start the annexation.
And so we started, they stayed the course.
And the only thing I have on there is to schedule the public meetings when we get there and wonder who might sign up to make sure that that one happens.
Can you spell Mark?
So Charles, you're good with we, if we share the city.org annexation page and you're totally good with that? And, or do you want us to wait until the new form gets up there before we do?
Form is up there. It's in its soft opening, if you will, most right now, that we've shared numerous times. It's kind of had several press releases, it's been on the media site, so completely welcome to share it. I encourage you all to share it.
I was like, just like to say thank you to your staff. I know this has been a massive project.
Thank you.
So the broad category of maybe living homeless harder in Cheyenne, identify, clean up easy access to places to live. The bridge project is, is going well, thanks to councilman Labor's efforts that, that was installed there. It's largely kept the homeless from setting up camp under the bridge. They will occasionally temporarily just be down in the creek bed, but they don't, they don't make the giant mess that they used to there. So I would certainly consider that a success so far. Purchase low barrier shelter is well under, it's purchased, I guess, and it's under rehab. I took a little bit of a tour over there yesterday. It's pretty interesting how they're going to approach that. And then involve law enforcement with aggressive homeless people. I, I kind of tie that together with the first one. So that, that's the, the meat of where the police department's been working. Just to throw out a few stats compared to last year, for six months of this year, compared to the first six months of last year, we've had a 314% increase in security checks and field interviews in the spider garage.
Say that number again?
314% increase in a 94% increase in the downtown development area. So what that, what that means is we prioritize it a great deal and we task people with going there repeatedly and looking for folks that are at a place, if you will. And, you know, many times they'll do a security check and there'll be nothing going on. So that doesn't really translate into contacting people. We do also continue to do the operation change. So January to July of this year, which is a grant, which I'm sure most of you know, we spent 173.3 man-hours on that project, which resulted in 287 contacts and 51 bus tickets, the purchase of bus tickets to reunify trainees back to where they actually have a support system. This also resulted in 34 citations and four arrests. This also resulted in 34 citations and four arrests. Coming on is we've been in discussions with CRNC to partner with them on a grant that they are seeking to establish a co-responder model. As we all know, mental health issues play a big part in the transient community. So the way this will work this time is they will have the grant, they will hire mental health professionals. They will hire us on overtime to go with them as they move throughout the city to contact transient populations and try and transition them into a better circumstance. I don't have a timeline on that, but we have fully committed to supporting that project. They they are TP the funding for that. So I I I don't think they have a definite timeline with that funding will be kind of available. Certain partner with them when it does. And then the next slide, please. Cameras installed in the Spiker garage. So so far there are 14 cameras. We're still missing some. There should be four more on the top floor where we've had a lot of our trouble. Supply chain issues continue to disrupt the installation of that from our contractor. The door locks are also not yet functional. So I think that combined with the fantastic artwork that they put up there is is I think helped a great deal. There's been a a little bit of graffiti re-put up there, but not very much. And there's still some some blank walls that I think need to be finished and those should be finished before long. But it's been frustrating for all of us that those security measures that have just not come. Contractor having issues getting the parts that they need. The remaining cameras are functioning well and have been helpful, but we all know the majority of our problems been up and forward forward there.
Oh, go ahead, President.
The cameras, who monitors those?
They are actually monitored physically when something happens with the records.
Or the 14 cameras that are in effect now, have they led to any arrests or?
I don't know that they directly led to any arrest because unfortunately they're in in the places where we don't traditionally have that much problems. But they have helped us further some investigations.
So we have signs of, let's say. Monitor, yes. Seems like they'll be everywhere. I mean, that's.
I mean, I know I've noticed them because I we have this conversation frequently. So I usually on the way into work, I'll drive all the way up to the fourth floor and see what's new. Because, you know, it got so bad before, we couldn't tell what was new now, but we have basically a clean slate. I'm like, well, that's new. That's new. But there are signs up there. I just don't know. Yeah.
There's several per floor.
Yeah, I I think they're about on every corner and by the stairwells that I know they're there. I just don't think they can leave those trucker out.
So in the two parking meetings that we had two weeks ago, and I guess the music was brought up about playing music in the parking garage that it would not be if the genre that our young people would appreciate or our homeless would appreciate, they would keep them up only. I was thinking more like acid rock type stuff. The other question that came up was painting the inside of the parking garage a lighter color because it is so dark or having better lighting. We what that was on the conversations with the downtown parking concerns was that if we could get more people parking there because they felt safer, it would generate more activity, which would keep homeless and migrants from that area. I was curious about, we did have a question at that meeting about the call boxes that there are evidently call boxes throughout the parking garage. I don't think I've ever seen one, but they wondered if those are even connected and where those calls go if they somebody pushes the button.
I I don't know that I've noticed one in there.
Should be a nine one one call.
So you push the button and it goes to nine one one?
Yeah, when you pick it up.
Oh, it's a phone.
It's a phone.
Okay. And then I wondered about like there's a there are some benches in the downtown area. One is outside the parking garage. It's not, you know, they it's they sell specifically benches to prevent homeless from sleeping on benches. And I've noticed that we have some of those like on the in Ward three of by the parking or by the bus stop where they have a great big armrest between them so that it's uncomfortable to lay across those benches. But I've noticed that there's one outside of the parking garage that it unfailingly, there is someone that is sleeping on that bench almost every night and has all their stuff spread out like a closet and it's they've kind of moved in there. So I'm just wondering if we might be able to just change the bench with one of those ones that has. I'm looking at Jason because he's kind of that guy.
To answer some of your questions though. So yes, under the downtown six penny projects, one of the ideas we had was to paint the interior of the Spiker garage a lighter color white, for example. The benches, yes, that's enough. That's also another project that we could tackle with six penny funds for the entire downtown. They do have the benches you're describing. Those would be probably a benefit to the downtown area because it just prevents people from laying across and we could force them to sit. That doesn't mean it'll totally take care of the the folks sleeping on the benches, but it would be a benefit for sure. With the lights in the Spiker garage, we replaced all the lights with a brighter lumen through all the stairwells. We also have a battery backup power on them now. So that if power were to go out, all of the lights would still illuminate if somebody was on the stairwell. We fixed the the exterior lights all the way around the building and we just got the gloves to do the the poles that are along the sidewalk. So all of those lights are functioning. We replaced and repaired all the lights in the interior of the structure as well. The art that we put up in July with paint sunders has worked really well. We've our vandalism was every day for a while and now we're down to just a couple of spots and working with those artists to see if they can come and finish up blink. Of the music in the elevator, the stairwell set, what we would like to do first is get the door locks to work. If we could eliminate one problem at a time, then we could see do we need to invest to implement that next strategy to to get them to move on. We can do that. The hard part is the contractor we've been working with is just the departure back orders. We just tell them. And so the fourth floor, we're looking for a couple of new cameras. We had two up there. They were vandalized. Trying to grab four cameras that are high resolution so that we can figure out who you are and then submit to the police like tracking down. But a lot of steps have been taken and corrected over the last year to make the parking structure a safer structure to keep it clean. The guys are down there cleaning. That's the first step every day to catch all three stairwells from the fourth floor down into restrooms. So that folks coming to work downtown have to use that structure feel safe.
Yeah. But I I guess I was under the impression and maybe I misunderstood this from the property. I thought Ted said that the doors were there were work. That's what he said. It was that they were now were working and they they could shut them down and open them up based on.
Were operational.
Okay.
One of the restroom doors, the main store was vandalized, so they had to replace the door. And there's a lot of mechanisms in the door so that the mag locks work. That was those were broken, so no door had been ordered. And then it also leads to the exit bar. So right now there's a button that it's an emergency, so that someone doesn't get locked in the restroom. These people that use those as shelters are survivalists, right? They're going to find a way, no matter what we do. So we try to do is partner with the police to monitor as often as they can. Our team does look at those cameras. I have them on my computer. Our team does look because they need to know what they're walking into. So when they get to work at four o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, they look at the computer. They watch all of those cameras to see where there may be folks that could cause a problem. And then if we need to, we call the police and ask them to assist us with evacuating most folks. And so it's not a 24 hour day monitoring, but when we have an issue, we could go back 10 days and take a look and see if we can track down who did it.
Sure. Just one of the or chief house, I guess, one of the things that came out of this meeting. Most of the folks that were there didn't know we were doing all these things. So I think it's really incumbent upon us now that we've invested in these cameras. To get that out.
Yes, sir.
Social media somehow.
I'll work with Cat and our our marketing team and see if we can put something out there to highlight what we've accomplished. And I think it'd be good for mayor, maybe a council member to go with us in the in face.
Yeah.
We certainly put that on our Facebook too.
Because they had no idea that the cameras have been installed. We weren't even.
No.
I was I was pretty sure you told me. But I don't think the majority of us knew that.
Can I segue next after?
I was just gonna say the other piece was that there was also a question about making underneath the bridge uninhabitable further down Crow Creek. And I was just wondering where we're at on that.
The names.
Down, I think it's towards missile down the side.
On 20.
Up the creek.
Up the creek.
I don't I don't think we've done anything.
I'm just wondering.
That's a different style of bridge, right?
Yes.
There's there's traditionally been a homeless camp up in modern concrete.
Right.
On city property.
Yeah, I just think we dealt with that a couple of times.
Yeah, that's correct. Part of the problem we have is if you guys are asking us to service just 6% population, if you go back to the market report, it talks about 91 to 94% being directly tied to the community or in Wyoming. That means those other 6% is not. And so what we're really servicing, we talk about the homeless community is a transit population. And then within that population, there were seven factors that were identified. And the seven factors that were identified, two of them are at the very bottom of that list. And that's what we're dealing with in terms of your your bridges, Martin Luther King Park, various locations along the U.P. Railroad and along the Greenway, if you will. And that is the 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 chronic drug user for alcohol abuse. And the other portion of that is the mentally ill. The services providers that we have, so just come here and welcome that those folks do a wonderful job in terms of keeping our displaced families and our homeless families in an opportunity where we can service them. But it was it's refreshing to hear that we're taking parts of this, the the piece specifically with CRMC and trying to connect those people with those services. Because ineffectively, all that we've done, when we cleaned up the bridge at Lincoln Way, we scooted them a little bit further down to Central Avenue. Then we cleaned up the trailer park and we scooted them a little bit further down the Greenway down off of First Street. And now we've scooted them a little bit further down under the Nation Way Bridge or the the Norris Light up, if you will, and then right along the Greenway. And so it's more of like a homeless urban sprawl opportunity, if you will, as they begin to go out into those opportunities and they find those areas they can live in. I believe more of what we're seeing in terms of the vandalism and damage, because it's on the risk side of the house as well, is local individuals that live in this community are tearing up the community. That's the damages. That's what we're seeing in terms of what Clean and Safe has to deal with. It does have that mentally ill population, that 6%. So I believe that we are servicing 91 to 94%. It's 100% accurate. I really believe that data is true in the market report. Well, we're not really capturing yet is that mental piece and that drug and alcohol piece. Because every one of the camps that we go out and clean up on the compliance side, it is a full day cleanup. And there are drug needles and bottles everywhere. And so it is a piece that we probably needed to find to make those goals actually work. I just don't know. When I'm asked all the time, do you need more staff? Do you need more tools and resources? We need a resource to help those individuals because then you don't have that sprawl and we're not scooting them down the track in one way or the other.
Take King, go back one slide. Okay, so this is where I think like Tom said, Michelle said, so I was actually here in 2016 when we approved the first camera. And so I went to Renee Jordan's office and she showed me how, you know, good they were back in 2016. So the 2016 cameras that we purchased, how many of them are still active that haven't been vandalized?
The majority of them. I don't have an exact number, but what they did is they went through and cleaned the lenses, made sure they were functional, that they would talk to the system that we're using to monitor. So we're getting a clear image. They repositioned some of them so that we could have a better vantage point of when a car is coming in off of like the carry entrance. And that we could track how it progresses through the structure. So the majority of those are operational. A few of them have been damaged and need to be replaced. But it was a matter of cleaning the lenses and reprogramming or repositioning where they were at.
It's who she no longer really has needs access to that because I know she had it when the, you know, some of the transit, not the buses, but you know, the other maintenance stuff. She was supposed to kind of watch that behind her door because people were banging on the door to get into her office, you know, through the garage. So that's why they let her have accessibility so she could see who was banging on the door before the and then the other part I was told is the other one that had the access to the cameras was the police department. And it was, I think, on the same schedule as it is now, the footage was saved for 10 days and then it would purge, you know, on that. So that's still the same. And then so really, how many additional cameras did we? Because how many do we have? I think we had about 10 or so in 2016.
We'll have a total of 18 as soon as we get the last board called up.
On the fourth floor. So so all of our floors will have surveillance. And is it just video? It's not audio still, correct?
It's just video.
Okay.
Well, we're trying to get on the fourth floor cameras that when you go by, light will turn on and there will be audio with letting you know you're being watched. And so then people would hear and see that a light came on when they went by. That's the type of camera.
Like a certain hour, does it go on like at 10 p.m. or is it just like? So I mean, in the daytime, isn't that thing going to be going off all the time then if cars are consistent? I'm not just on the fourth floor, right? That's where you're doing your motion detectors. Okay. Because I was like in the other floors, I was like that thing's going to be going off all the time.
And then it creates on the log incident, like that's where we know it's.
So that's because pretty much, you know, I know that there's some of the transient issues and that, but usually what I'd always get complaints from stakeholders downtown was the cars that were, you know, doing spin outs and everything up on the top floor. So you're that was what I always heard was the main concern, not necessarily a transient population.
Transient stairwells are the issue there.
The motor vehicles on the top and then the stairwells was the transient population. So as far as that, I mean, how are we gonna? You're right. They're gonna find a way to break no matter what, how many times we fix it. So I mean, so with in the cameras in the doorways, is that is that person now sizable like, you know, or is the city going to be on the hook for, you know, every single damage to a bathroom door? Are we actually, when we press charges, are we allowed to take them to court to say, you know, like when somebody can usually like what we found out when guardrails get smashed that we, you know, can file a claim with either auto insurance, you know, to make sure that's taken care of. How do we, what kind of, you know, repercussions do we have?
I think municipal charge vandalism, restitution is what you're talking about.
Right.
I think that is just about non-existent in municipal court, obviously, whatever.
Yeah, because they only did the 750 and then that's where we're capped by state statute.
So yeah, so restitution is available through the state court system a little more readily. So whenever we run into the amount that's appropriate, we would sure like to file at state court.
And so I guess with our arrest records, have we seen like Eric had said in regards to vandalism attack, you know, say it's not even transient to say, you know, it's just somebody going and breaking stuff.
These guys won't believe me, but vandalism is actually down 22% over this time last year. So Jason accused me of not taking the reports.
I just.
It's still a high number though.
Right, it is. And so I guess that's where I was wondering more about our restitution so that we don't have, just like what we've talked about with the, you know, the catalytic converter stealing when they stole our copper off of our, you know, whatever sprinkler systems and stuff like that. Like how do how do we read?
So the back the back flows aren't eligible for restitution because they were filed in state court.
Okay.
I guess it's dependent on the prosecutor to ask for it, you know, on a conviction. So that's still going through, but.
Yeah, I mean, you could put it under homeless issues because really it's just widespread vandalism. I don't know if we want to put that that, you know, if we do a PSA or social media release in regard, you know, what we talked about for ID and security measures. If that's, you know, it says restitution will be followed up with the city through state courts for, you know, vandalism.
What I'm hearing is that it's not a lot of the homeless, the vandals, it's locals.
Locals, yeah.
Right.
I mean, it's very, but the reality is when you look at what we're dealing with. It's it's very erratic and it's not consistent in terms of the same locations. We have a couple of parks that do take a consistent beating, but even then the vandalism spikes from one opportunity to another. And so it's really hard to capture that. And even with what we've done on risk in terms of purchasing portable camera systems to go out and try to catch the same type of offender or opportunity. It's it's really limited because they're set for certain types of shots. And so if the if the vandal comes in a different direction, we may or may not be able to capture that opportunity. We may or may not be able to capture that opportunity, so we don't have very many of those. One of the things that you mentioned, which was the cameras, when you guys were here before and did put those in. And when we met with um, the service provider on those, they were very honest that, that we had met life capacity. On those particular camera systems and they just failed as a, as a city to continue to upgrade that opportunity, upgrade those systems. Another piece you recommended to us as well is maybe looking at our downtown community partners, because almost ninety percent, I think was the number he threw at us. Have outside cameras, they can actually see better in terms of our facilities that are downtown, like the parking structure, so they can see that. So maybe. We wanna have a broader conversation in terms of meeting with those downtown community partners, kind of seeing what they capture, if they'd be willing to share that information with us in terms of. What they're seeing as well, but that was another idea versus us investing another opportunity. But if we don't maintain and, and have that, and the, and the O N M for those types of things, because we assume that they're working or assume that they got a forever life expectancy. We're never gonna stay ahead of the curve. And most often, when we go to repair something like that, or we look at vandalism of a park, if we're to place a camera, it's after it's already happened. So it was very reactive versus being a proactive approach in terms of how you wanna fund that and how you wanna maintain that going forward.
Yeah, I would agree, cause that's what, you know, from twenty sixteen to now, it went basically like you just said, it went from. Me and the members of my council in twenty sixteen knew that we had paid for the installation and all of a sudden now, in twenty twenty-two, six years later. Note, some people don't even know that cameras even existed. So, you know, we didn't even get a no and M type of conversation in the last six years. On what we needed to do to upkeep our project. It was, it went from, we did it to nothing.
Yeah, I think the main reason that the focus came back to where we were at within that parking structure, or whether we were municipal properties in terms of how we surveil, uh, do the surveillance on those. A lot of the times, it's because we've had a situation, so we're trying to react to it and thinking that perhaps something is working, but it's not. And so in talking about the homeless living in the, the parking structure or being in our parks or any of those opportunities. We've got it outside this door, staff comes in, some of them are at six in the morning, and they're having to very kindly ask these folks to move along. But that, that population obviously goes down um, in the winter. And what's been unfortunate at the same time is it's very mild winters in terms of. Uh, what we normally would see here. And so I think that we're also seeing an uptick and some of that vandalism and an uptick in terms of. Those folks being more um, visible in the community, because they don't wanna be seen any more than we wanna see them. But they're looking for a place to go, I'm looking for a place to be. And I think that that's kind of why it's, it seems to be a little larger in the impact of this current thing.
Okay, absolutely.
Jason, can you talk about the downtown outside of the parking structure? What are you seeing in the plaza? Uh, what, the downtown back, I'm just talking about one door. Is it as frequent as in past or is it better or worse?
What we've uh, noticed this year is it, it, it has improved. Uh, again, the one door is growth, uh, the facilities maintenance guys replaced it and now we're just putting in the electric mechanisms to make sure that the back locks over. The wear and tear over the years and the vandalism that we've had over the years have rendered a lot of the parts uh. Irreparable. And so we're at a point again where we're asking six penny money to make a renovation of those rest. We've replaced the handles on the toilets so many times and some of them are now outdated. The ring around the toilets to seal uh, broke. And so they constantly leak. The panel doors and the partitions, they've been beat up so many times and repaired that they're in need of replacement. But as far as this year, it seems to have gotten better. We tried to, again, the crew does a great job going in every day cleaning and. Uh, making sure we're getting folks to move out. Uh, we have timers on those locks and then when the uh, back lock wasn't working, they were going back in the evening and locking them. On the plaza itself, we moved the majority of the tables that were down there down to the gunslinger square area. The gunslingers are happy because people have a spot to sit and watch their show and it reduces to remove the opportunity for the transients just to sit at the tables and, and lounge all day. Uh, we removed our, moved one of the tents to immediately east of the splash pad, so parents could sit under the shade, under the tent and be under shade. To watch the kids play and that helped to keep transients from under one of those tents, uh, cause they were taking refuge during the day. We also keep an eye on the power. We're trying to drop our power when we're, when we know we don't have events, so that they're not out there plugging in devices to charge their phones. Also, a lot of steps have been taken. There is an improvement. Uh, and I think just with the downtown and the amount of events, the businesses that are starting to thrive, it makes it less desirable for those folks to wanna be in broad daylight, like Eric said, they don't wanna be seen.
So this is tangential, I think, to this conversation that you came to a work session with a list of items that. Uh, you thought would be helpful in maintaining the downtown area. Some of those having to do with this and some of those. Um, just in maintenance of the, you know, safe, clean and safe crews and their work. Um, so I'm just curious, and this is probably my ignorance on how that system works, but. Is, is there now a need for a resolution to move your request forward? Um, you know, you know, we heard from both Christie and we heard from Dominic, we heard from you and um. I just, I'm hesitant to keep waiting until we have, you know, of the bulk of that majority of money collected or whatever, when we could be addressing some of these issues. Like painting the inside of the parking garage, I'm guessing could fall under that, those dollars as well. Um, it's in that downtown area, development area and, you know, for economic development purposes to get more people downtown. Um, or, and does that require a resolution on our part? How do we move that forward so we can start getting you? The money you need in order to be able to address some of these issues, because that really is part of this homeless issue if we're gonna make headway. Right?
Yes.
We need a resolution?
I, I would think so. We've, uh, like you described, we gave our presentation of what our needs were. Um, there are, there are X amount of dollars that we've already collected. Um, I've provided our, I've created a list from that presentation. Of what we feel on the maintenance side, what we could accomplish for the next six months, twelve months, eighteen months, twenty-four months. Um, and so that you would know kind of a cost estimate of what we had in mind and a priority of the project. Um, really, it's at your discretion to, to give us direction of how you want those funds to be utilized and when.
So we can put that on our list is to get the resolution done.
You share the six months, twelve months, eighteen, I, I have a whole list, but I don't have it broken out.
I could email each of your copy of what I've, what I had in mind. And then if you have questions, concerns or other thoughts, I know I'm getting.
It'd be nice to get it, get as much done as we can while the weather's good and get a jump on next spring before tourist season hits again.
Sure.
After all, which is something that, um, am I hearing that you're?
Sure, and I think I have a lot of colleagues that would co-sponsor.
Okay.
Jeff Shakeness said yes, he's a yes.
Come on.
Tom's a yes.
Sky and most guts are yes.
Scott's a yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, we gotta read everything. I don't, I'm gonna know until I read it.
Wow, then we won't ask you again. Peter, you're a yes?
Certainly.
Thank you. Remember?
I gotta read it.
That's fine. You got enough.
Over anybody then.
Thanks.
Yeah, probably.
Thank you, Jason.
So chief.
Yes, sir.
A lot of our issues are along the creek. And. I'm not sure, I was surprised at the cost of the work that we did under the Lincoln Way Bridge, but we got that done because they were doing the bridge. So when you go up to Westland Road, which is the same design, has the same problem. Um, we don't have a funding mechanism and. Um, also, we don't really have a way to look at. The length of the creek over there by Miranda Concrete. We've got a problem area that's always been a problem area. But really, there's no way into it. Be above it, you can be on Missile Drive across the creek, but you can't actually. Have a patrol type situation. So in those cases, are we talking about the officers saying you're trespassing on city property? Or would it be useful for us to have a ordinance banning camping?
Well, I, I think that would be useful. However, I, I would, I would caution you that many places try that. And um, those are the cities you see with tents on sidewalks and, and every place else. Um, I think it's, I, I, I won't step into the legal world too much, but I think it's ripe for a challenge. Um. Cities, Boise tried it, you know, keep them out of camping in parks, they, they've lost it at the Supreme Court. Um. So I only tell you this to say, I, from my perspective, I think it would be handy to have that kind of ordinance. I'm just not sure how it stands up to a legal challenge in, in the end.
Well, that wouldn't do much good, but uh.
No, and I, I mean, I, I can't promise you how that would work out, cause I, I'm not aware. But I've seen it go, go badly elsewhere.
Well, we have to, uh, I was down at uh, the Pump House Wetlands today. And there were some guys living down there and the pump house had been broken into again. And. Um. It just seems to me that, uh, fully ignored the idea that people move on, but. If you're really focusing on certain areas that are known to be problems like the Lincoln Way Bridge. Which is never gonna be as bad as it was, right? Cause it's, it's improved, but um. I just wonder. How we would fund the same type of an effort at the Westland Road Bridge and.
Cost, I, I never heard of it.
It was sixty thousand.
That was our side.
Excuse me?
That was our side, right?
No, that we, we did have.
We split.
Thirty thousand something.
So, but of course, that was a state highway, they were doing the work, their local, they had economy of scale, but at the same time. I just believe wherever there is known camping areas. We need to make the effort to deal with it. So you're trying to do away with the hideouts.
Right.
So they're not, and I hope I don't sound um. Too ugly towards those unfortunate people. But it's been pointed, been pointed out here, they're. Often in desperate straits, camped in one place together, it's really not good.
And I think, I think what you find is with the folks that are doing that, when there are many other services they could avail themselves to. Are pretty far down the road of uh, substance addictions and mental health issues. Um, so generally, um, just speaking generally, probably not all of them, they, they would never fit in a community, they, they wouldn't follow the rules. Uh, only go there under the most drastic of circumstances. So what, what we end up doing is moving them from the concrete to wherever they go next. They're, they're going somewhere. So it's a constant battle of that, where, where we come along, yes, we can arrest them for certain things. They go to jail for a couple of days, that costs us money because we're now paying the house them in jail. They're right back out within a few days. And I only point this out to say that arresting them is rarely a solution. Uh, we generally only do it when it, it solves an immediate problem. It doesn't solve a long range problem. That's why I'm hopeful this partnership with C R M C. Give us another avenue. But I, I have to say, the mental health situation, the resources here in Wyoming are almost non-existent. It's, it's extremely difficult to get somebody committed. And, and I won't even go into the stories that, that I've run into in my short time here. Of, of people that have no business being out in public and everyone knows it. The court knows it, the mental health people know it, there's just no room to put them. In, I think, the state's one mental health facility. Uh, so it's a daunting task. And, and yes, we can, we can deny them areas, but it just moves it. Uh, it, it's.
I'm darn glad we got that bridge.
I am too, I am too. I, I'm all about removing it because. You, you would hope they get frustrated enough that they, they, they quit this or go somewhere else where living's easier or whatever, but.
You'll buy this ticket.
Uh, we will buy a ticket with the loosest of a claim of, of support system there.
I just had one thought. So one of the pieces that we really are missing is how we tether that. And in most communities, there is a. Basically like a homeless uh, task force that basically works with the community partners, works for the city, works for the state. And, and finding out how we fund that. The one that they came out of the report as well is that we were extremely um, shortsighted in terms of. Funding those mental health opportunities, but yet nobody was advocating, nobody was speaking up and saying that. You know, we have this identification of the folks around the Miranda Concrete area, so we wanna move them out of there, we wanna get them to another location. That's perfect. But the problem was the funding source to get them the services that they needed. And, and where does that come from? And so I think it kind of goes back to a legislative kind of conversation in terms of if we identify it throughout the state as a problem, it's a rule in terms of that, that homeless opportunity. It's not a matter of arrest and remove, it's not a matter of clean up, take down, throw away, cause they get another resource, they get another tent and they find a new location. It's getting that buy-in from them and then making sure that they're receiving a continued type of, of mental health services. And it's six percent, it's about a six percent of that population. And truly, it's making sure they get those meds, the meds they need to be on, it's. Getting them into a dryout center, it's getting them those opportunities. They'll never solve it a hundred percent, it absolutely cannot be done. But we couldn't mitigate some of that if we start looking at how we wanna fund it through a tax structure.
And I can just share with you guys, I don't think that's our mission as a city. I know honestly, we could spend our full uh, general fund budget on mental health and they would not even be able to make a huge dent in it.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it's, it's that hard. So, you know, I think Mission Creek was something we have to be really careful about. I hundred percent agree with what you just said, but I think that. Goes into capital to find ways to do that. You know, we just, we just don't have the, the resources as a city to be able to take on those. Very worthy efforts, but just outside of, I think, our mission. Uh, so I just want to be clear that I don't think we should get into that area.
Yeah, and that's, that's what the state, so actually what the report said too, it's not a municipality elevation.
But I think that, quite honestly, I think we've about hit our limit for what we can do for homeless as far as dollar wise with the purchase of the state church motel.
We were speaking earlier and. Some of our. Local organizations, churches, et cetera, provide bags of food, sleeping bags. And many of these things are found along the creek. They're, they're just thrown away. So. I, I don't wanna discourage those folks, but I think they need some focus on, on how they can actually help.
I've been trying to discourage them for years from doing that. And they, and it's basically Christian charity, but that's what. They basically view as a necessity that's instantly resolved, but I've been fighting that since twenty sixteen, where I was. An advocate for Camea, going to each church, like, you know, paying to services that exist and quit supplying tents and coats and clothes and. And sleeping bags and just anything, it's just like, give it to the resources so that it's always funneled in to your services and not. You know, and it, even to things like gas cards, you know, cause you could go to a church and, you know, some people were hitting five different churches. You know, a week and getting gas cards, you know, to fill up, cause they were using the vehicle as their heating element. So they were always running their tank just cause they were sleeping in their car. So they're running up gas cards and stuff like that. So I've been trying that for years to get, you know, the faith-based community to refocus their efforts on. You know, contributing to the social structure and the social services. And, and a lot of them say that they're, um, you know, congregations just. Want to see a tangible, immediate need resolved and not a long-term plan.
I do know that there is a, an effort amongst the churches now to um, try and uh, work together to identify chronic users. Uh, the uh, resources. Um, I sign all the checks at our church and um, for every, we usually have two to three people a week. That we write checks for their heating bills or for utilities, that type of thing. And um, we maintain a list and then that's shared with other churches so that um, they're not hitting every single church for the same resource. Or the same name.
There's something for your mayor in a minute. Since I can't get to all of them, maybe you can. Maybe I think we probably had a church.
Yeah, I.
We got a couple more to go.
We still have two more to do and I think we are going to hit most of the goals, most of the definitions of success for the homeless issues that we talked about this year. Um, I don't, I don't think this won't be the end. Um, of that focus for the government body, I don't think, but I think most of the things we're gonna get done, when I look at, we had like eight definitions of success for this, this year. And um.
Has everybody seen that report? Maybe it, the Marvin report?
Oh, thanks.
Oh, I haven't.
Did you just mail out?
I, I emailed it out to everybody, but that was probably last year.
I'll say, I mean, we have a couple that, that, if you go back to that, that last slide, sorry.
That's friendly, yeah.
I, we have a couple on there that maybe don't get done this year, but I think the majority are gonna get done this year. I would tell you, I was just in Nashville. And I ran three miles in one direction on the Cumberland River, three miles in the other direction. On their version of the Greenway, and they have signs all over the place that say, go camping. Items like, be discarded, one of how many homeless people I ran in?
Items like, be discarded, one, how many homeless people I ran it to in those runs? None.
Really?
None, none sleeping in, in that part area.
Not that you saw.
It's pretty steep going, you're not sleeping on that hill. I'll take you to Nashville next time I go with you. But anyway, I think we're going to address those. Uh, unless somebody else thinks we need some course corrections here. I think we're on course to complete what we wanted to complete this year. And I put two action items up here, the resolution to release funds that the governing body will own. And then CRE and, and CAT will work on some social media releases that'll help. And I think there's a couple, I, I will get involved with that as well, because I think there's a couple of different focuses on that one. So downtown businesses know that they're safe parking, there are these things in the garages and the things that are coming, but also for people to, you know, just sitting in a day and a half in Nashville, all the things that I saw that discourage certain behaviors. Of course, we don't have a Broadway street here with every person on the planet trying to make country music. But it was cool.
I'm wondering if we should maybe once, when those bathrooms get vandalized, Jason, like when there's thirty-two thousand dollars in damage in one weekend. When we actually are visiting with people at council and coffee and talk about that, some people have no idea. And I think sometimes putting pictures out of that vandalism to let the public know that, you know, this has been done over the weekend. That's why we've had to close this bathroom and here's thirty-two thousand dollars of taxpayer money that we're going to have to replace this stuff with.
Jason, I'll jump on that one because we did some stuff with Skinner last year. Maybe it's not hitting all the social media channels, but.
Soccer fields.
Yep, it was spread all over the place and I even had people come to me saying, holy crap, what's going on?
Guys, I think we need to move along here, we're not going to get into the whole, so.
Yeah, so next. Fifteenth Street, oh, look, Tom.
Okay, so just reading again off of where you were, complete the Fifteenth Street Plan, Plan Architects. Is it installed, it was hired by the Chinam, both, it was actually hired by us, we, we did contract with them. They, they did the, I guess, the selection. Right now, I've got my update and another, we'll, we'll talk about the actual dates, but they actually did submit the draft plan on Friday. So that's now in circulation and we've got a, we have a broad brush, we're going to do a second development review and EPR. So they'll, every, every department will get a chance to look at it. So he, as, as indicated earlier, Dominic is, is, is a part of our system. We basically have three project managers, it's Renee and I and Dominic working in concert. He takes a portion of this, Renee has taken a good share of it and I, I've taken the technical side and trying to help facilitate that. We did have a very robust public process that was spearheaded by Dominic and, and Mr. Seabridge was part of that as well. So that, that came out on the street and we went to the businesses, we did a walkthrough, very, 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 very productive. Things that we heard a lot was parking, believe it or not, parking was the theme of the year, I think. So you'll see a lot of that addressed in the, in the plan. Jennifer, keep going next slide, please. So the total grant award for this, this was, and Renee can follow up on this, but this was the EPN, I thought it was seven hundred and thirty-five or seven hundred and thirty-three thousand. It's what I remember off the top of my head, but not sure if that was just not part of the match or I'm missing some components. But that was mainly for what we call all construction, but you know, the point about this one is, is it really is just going to be able to pay for the rehabilitation of those cars for asbestos and, and refurbishing those, some of those cars. It did include what we call the Phase One A to get about three areas that we possibly could get cars on. But again, as cost as we know are escalating every day, you know, I, I think we better state that, that it meant most to be Phase One A to get three cars on, onto the Fifteenth Street. I'm going to just hard outside of the year, so I don't know what that one was with the press release. So we, we did find a, a home for these now, I, I did work with, with Grant Peak Development. And we are now, you'll see through council, an MOU that will come on the next cycle for storing the rail cars for the next year at the Swan Ranch and they'll be able to do the asbestos abatement and clean up there. And they'll, they'll bubble them or whatever they could do. The MOU is just going to state that all they have to do is just make sure we have grass cut and a ring around it so we don't have fires that spread. But it'll be on the far side of the Swan Ranch over in the UP area where I call it the, they call it the peanut loop. So it's a big loop on the west side and that we stored in there. To stabilize the pump house, I, I was, I was not part of this one, so right now I know, and Charles, you may have to help me with this. Was that, you, you may have to phone some lines, the architect, was that estimate for them to? Please help me with this one.
That was for an assessment of what it would take for, for stabilizing and mothballing and updating the previous plan.
All right, and then next slide, please, Joe. So I'm just going to, so they, as I said, Plan One Architects, they completed their outpour plan on Friday. It wasn't acted robust public process. We did, we did add the steering committee that we've kind of put together, then we meet just like what we do with the Velvore about every other week, sometimes up to three weeks, but it's comprised of Dominic and, and others, myself, Renee. Sometimes Mr. Laboron was there as well. It, it is, it is just a kind of update where we are in the process. And the, the master plan itself is under staff review that we just was submitted, so we just got into the enterprise, everyone can start to people look at it. What we'd like to do then is to circulate it to the public, including this group after we do at least our first internal review. And those things are going to check from technical aspects to costs that were put in there. We just don't have a chance to kind of take a look at this before we launch it out to the public. And I said the MOU with this one metro park, we're going to store fifteen rail cars. And then the, the other component to this that I need to talk about is the MO with UPRR. For actually, and that's for actually transporting those cars to this one ranch. And that's, that's another piece of this. So Stephanie's been working on that with, with the UPRR attorney. And we hope to see that first draft to her next week from UP and she'll take a look at that. Next one, please. So just to give you a little summary of where we are with bid packages, because all these components about doing this rail experience involve several different departments and bid packages. So we have to, we have to place those cars in this one. So UP is actually going to take them there, but then we have to get a crane to lift them off. Because it's not, and UP is not going to pay for that part. So that contract alone, you know, we don't have a ballpark yet, but to, 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 to get mobilization for a crane this size, because we get, we're talking, there, there, in this case, I don't think at this point, we were looking at a locomotive out there. It was just basically all the passenger cars and the caboose's, so they're lighter, but you still, it's a sizable crane. So you're looking at probably about a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar mobile, mobile loan, just to get them to do it. And then to lift each car, we, we don't know yet, but I'm, I'm thinking ballpark is, is five hundred to a thousand dollars. So that's money, again, fifteen thousand for that plus twenty for the mold, so thirty-five to forty thousand just to just offplace those. Now, bid package, bid package number two is what I called about asbestos abatement or remediation. And again, with part of that grants as well, so that, that would be part of that package. And then we have bid package three, which is actually doing what we call Phase One A of the site and street improvements. As we've been working through this process, there's a lot of talk about impacting the parking areas, not impacting the parking areas. So the preview is this, what we're looking at is an option to park the cars on the north side diagonally, not reverse diagonal, Charles, just regular diagonal. It's to try to, to improve that parking all along both the blocks. And then not encroaching, but I didn't want to change the street width because we're already too narrow. So the, the, the plan came in and they wanted to narrow the street up and move the curb and gutter. But I'm looking at thirty-five to forty dollars a foot to remove and replace concrete. There is, oh, I think it's four hundred times four, there's probably a thousand feet. So if you start doing the numbers, it doesn't take very long for this to start to add up pretty high. So again, we're looking at that first package to do curving gutter improvements in areas that are bad, some slab replacements that are in front of that area. And then again, just getting the parking lot improvements need to be done, the drainage improvements that need to be done. Because right now, that's another component of this. All the drainage basically goes from the street side into the UP rail yard. Well, that is obviously not ideal for UP. So we're going to have to redirect that drainage back towards the storm sewer. There's a seventy-two inch pipe that's on Fifteenth Street that runs along that area and we're, we're going to be able to capture it, which actually goes to the Pump House Wetlands and then eventually gets to Crow Creek. So again, it's, it's a process. Number four is then the movement of those cars from the Swan Site to actually Fifteenth Street. And so again, we'll have a crane operation that actually put it back on and hopefully we can transport it by rail and/or, or truck or however we can, because we have a couple of different options there, but like, it's going to be, it's going to be some cost. And again, the one is about the EPA funding that we did find and Renee can follow up with this. When we had our first meeting with them, we have to have all this stuff in place. The packages must be ready and out on the street before we can actually claim the first one on our reimbursement check. So that means there's going to be some bills that we're going to have to put before we actually can use the EPA money. And that's the caveat that they didn't talk about at the beginning. And so when we met our first meeting with them, that, that was kind of a surprise to, to both Renee and I. But that's going to have to be something we prepare for. I mean, again, as I just stated, the first, just the first one alone, we, we're looking at, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of forty thousand dollars.
So it's a reimbursement process?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the last slide?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
You're probably about done here, we talk.
No, that's fine. I, so, I, so I, I'm just really concerned. We're talking about using three of these rail cars initially, but there's fifteen of them that we're going to move, we're going to restore and then we're going to pay to have restored eventually. At the UP, in my recollection and in my experience so far, they never give anything away that has any value. So I'm really concerned that we're really just removing their trash for them at our expense. So I'm wondering, have we gotten a bid on what it's going to cost to restore these since John Remash is doing time and it won't be available for a while?
Well, that's part of it, Patrick, so that we're putting together those specifications that will be putting those, that stuff together. And that's part of a separate contract that we have, that we'll have to have somebody help us with.
Because I've looked online, the closest, some of the closest railroad restoration people are like St. Louis. And I don't know that they're going to come and spend time on Swan Ranch to restore our, our course for us.
And, and, and I'll be quite frankly, you know, I can tell, I'm the first person to tell you, this is not my expertise. So you, you've got me a little bit in the dark. I don't have really any, any experience with rail car restoration, so don't know.
I'm just really, you know, I love this project, but I'm really hesitant to start committing funds. If one, we don't know that the cars are worth restoring. I mean, we haven't had anybody officially look at these other than John Remash, who I'm not sure that we can really count that as an expert opinion right now to restore those. And then I'm looking at twenty thousand dollars. You said basically to stabilize and to load and to store them.
What we understood, ma'am, is that they're going to then, they're going to, they're going to encapsulate them and bring them out. UP is doing that without any expense to us.
Except the crane.
Except for the crane, we have to offload them. And, and, and I'm hoping I'm overestimating, which I usually do. So if I come in and tell you it's only costing us five thousand dollars, you'll be very happy. So I'm going to overestimate what I think and, you know, we'll get a real bid package together to find out what it's going to cost. I tried to get the Swan Ranch at Grand Peak folks, the Swan Ranch Rail to, to help us, but they don't have a crane that size to be able to do it. So.
And this track is not connected to that, that, whatever it is, spur that comes off and goes into it?
I'm, I'm sorry, mayor, I don't quite understand your question.
What we're storing the cars isn't connected to the spur?
It, it is, but we have to offload it from that track on, on to, into an area that, because we, that's usable track for Grand Peak, they won't offload it, so.
So, so the track that we're putting them on is not connected to this?
There won't be on track, they're going to be setting off on the side. They'll be, they'll be setting off on the side.
Okay.
But they don't want us to leave it on the rails because it's usable, it's a usable rail system for them.
So what if we, I'm just, this is just a what if, what if we go through all of this? And then we realize that these cars, when they come to look at them, they're like, yeah, you just, you know, got sold a bill of goods and they would have had to have paid to have this scrap metal taken away. And we can't restore them, they're not restorable. And we've invested all of this money, we've accepted this grant, which once we accept that grant, we're going to be, it's a reimbursement only. I just, I think we may have the cart before the horse.
I, I don't have a response for that one. I, I, I will put it to you this way. I think that so far, if we're all we're looking at is the car placement here. And this first contract, you know, when we get it out, we're going to know more. Once we get a contractor on board that does this, we find out the cost, then I, you know.
They do that, Tom, if they're not even worth restoring.
Well, we'll know then, I mean, the bid package will be put together. Again, it's free for them to take it out to the rail park, the UP is doing that, okay? They're going to encapsulate it. The only cost that we have is this initial cost to get them offloaded from the track. So once that point occurs, then we get the bid package out for starting the abatement and the renovation as one bid package. Now, we don't have to accept that bid. If it comes in at three million dollars, you can say, nope, we're only going to do three cars. I mean, we, I think there's a point here where we can, we can find the sweet spot that is bearable by the council and, and the taxpayer that we make this thing happen. But again, it's kind of like what I said before, it's probably not the full thing. I mean, I think our envision of what this could be is, is here, what reality is is probably here. But I think we can get there if we don't try to bite off too much and, and I think we'll see that right away.
Can we have a restorer, or can we take some pictures and send them to a restoration company and have them do some sort of an analysis before we even? Because once we accept those, the ownership of those fifteen cars and they move them out there, then if we want to get rid of them and we decide that they're not worth restoring, then we're going to have to figure out how to get them removed from there, pay to have them removed. They haven't put back on a train car, UP probably will not take them back for us. And I'm just thinking maybe, and it's got asbestos, and then, so then we've got the EPA issues. So I'm just thinking, we need to get, I think we need to figure out that piece first. And the other piece I'm thinking is maybe we would be better off taking the money that we are looking at spending on this, if we really want to move Big Boy downtown and spend, take this money and invest it in moving that to this area that is going to be our train area. I don't, I just think this train cars story is just a little more than sketchy and really scary if it does, if, if these are not worth restoring.
Let me back up a little bit so we get, so we, the, the part of the deal that I, I was, I, I got with Grand Peaks, okay? They're, they're going to give us one year free, one year rent free, okay? So we have a year to evaluate this. We've got some time on the grant. If you start to get involved and certainly you're going to end up where you were before, you can't, you've got to be careful with federal money because we can't, we can't over engage a contractor and look at something and expect them to bid on it. If you do that, you're breaking federal laws. So we can't, we cannot, we cannot ask too much about these folks. If we put this bid package together, this is not going to be a big, a big cost. This is a small cost on paper, okay? And maybe we look at it a different way, maybe we look at it as we only look at the three cars that we plan on getting there. I mean, maybe it's a smaller bite, find out what that is. But, and the only cost that we're in for then is just like you said, yes, there might be some disposal cost and re, reloading these up. But if we load them up for garbage, I probably can get them trucked out of there and, and take them somewhere.
We could do an RFP though to contractors, under federal guidelines, you can do an RFP by sending out pictures, by sending out information and requesting, you know, would you be interested in even bidding on this? Because we may find that they're not even interested.
But I think what we have to be careful, I mean, because again, as, as I stated, I mean, when we signed the EPA, when we get the federal money, we say that we're going to follow all of the guidelines.
Right.
And we have to be very careful. And I mean, what I've found is, I mean, we're talking about, you know, if you, if you give a preview to one contractor that you didn't give somebody else, you can find yourself in dangerous territory.
But there's a list, I mean, there's a process to do that.
We have to send them all.
Guys, I think we've made that point, I really do, I think, I think we understand the concern and. Guys, I think we've made that point. I really do. I think I think we understand the concern and and we can. Sure, I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense.
What you meant to say was.
I see.
I do.
Well, this one I got involved in just trying to help facilitate this and I don't claim to be an expert at this by any means. So this is out of my realm and it this is one of those ones doing the best I can.
Do you mind if I add just a couple of things?
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to add a couple of things. We do have asbestos. Quotes on all of the cars coming from U P. They were able to provide all of their reports to us for the asbestos. What is included in all of the cars? We do have that. So and we do have a local company and that's kind of where we were headed with when we did our our budget for this project. Was a local company. We are running into, like you said, the closest ones are are here, there and everywhere. So we have to put the bid out with what the E D A has said. If the bids come back at a at a price point that we are not comfortable with, we can say no. Go back to the E D A and they will let us do a sole source for the people who originally did our our budget quotes. So that is within. Pardon?
Is he gonna do it from raw ones, Renee?
Uh, this is a guy in Cheyenne. This is vintage rail restorations in Cheyenne.
Thanks, Renee.
Sure.
Hey Renee, why why have you on the the horn too? We can't change the needs of the way we're gonna use the E D A. To move big way, right? We have to do for what.
That is correct.
We would do.
Yep, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
One thing about the way rail buffs look at things, and it's why I mentioned Kansas City, some of those cars up there aren't even restored. They like to see it old. So some of them we might not even have to do that with. But that's, that's kind of how they think. They'll come from all over the world and probably see these things. It'd be three sixty-five tourism for showing you. All your concerns are in the jet. Certainly not gonna be an easy move.
So Mr. Cobb.
Mr. Lightworm.
Where are we planning on placing the other twelve cars besides the three that might go on fifteenth street?
Funny, you should ask that. Um, we were thinking that Reed Avenue was a prime location for some of those cars.
Well, I certainly don't agree. It's very limited space over there.
On some of the sites, um, some of the sites.
You mean those disconnected sightings? Well. I think fifteen cars is and going and placing them off the track. On property that we don't own for a year's time is. Need some real thought here. And one of those thoughts I'd like to see us have, be able to do is go look at them.
That's a good idea.
Let's let's go look at those cars, review the asbestos reports that we have. And determine that if there's some necessity of some of them. But you move fifteen cars out there at those, with those kind of problems. And not to mention, I I guess we're all aware, as we discussed earlier, about the transient homeless issues. We're gonna go put those cars out there on somebody else's property. Who's gonna maintain them? Who's gonna keep that? They break in. And we've had a lot of issues out there in the not so distant past. So. I'm absolutely opposed to the whole idea of fifteen cars. And I think that surely the first thing we should do. Is go look at them. Look at the asbestos abatement, which we all know is very expensive. And then the renovation of the cars. To the level of a tourism attraction. It's incredibly beyond any funding mechanism that we have. And I wanna note that. I looked at the report that came out today and we still haven't, in that report. We haven't determined if it's gonna be Big Boy or Old City. Right? What kind of master plan is that? I mean, and I just don't understand how we've spent this much time and money on this thing. And don't have a better understanding. And I absolutely am totally opposed to moving fifteen cars. After somebody else's property for some. Idea that we can do that remediation and renovation of the cars. So I strongly suggest, Mr. Mayor, that the absolute minimum is for us to go look at those cars.
Actually, if you move those fifteen cars out there and you can't do nothing with them in a year, you put them on eBay. It's probably sell those things to. Rail bus that wanna make refurbishment themselves. Big bucks for them.
Let's make sure the M O U says we can sell them.
I mean, there are probably, we could sell a big one.
Well, I mean, the M O U and U P are.
Is it possible to get this local? Rail car restoration company brought there with us. They're not gonna guarantee anything, obviously, but.
Just give us an estimate.
This one's restorable, this one's not. Tom, I don't know whether that jeopardizes us or not, so we can look into it.
We'll look into it really hard. Renee, you will have one with this, right? We'll get a hold of that rap.
That's correct. I'll work on that.
What if, I'm just curious, what happens, Renee, if we spend some of these dollars? And then realize that we can't carry out this plan or that it's not gonna come to fruition. Do we not get reimbursed for any of those dollars that were spent or it do, or are we basically? Are we off the hook for trying to spend the rest of it or for repaying that to the federal government?
The way the A P A, EPA works with this, or the E D A with this grant is we kind of. Work hand in hand with them every step of the way. The bid proposals have to be reviewed by them first. We're already talking to them about the little bit of changes in scope that we've already made, just as this project progresses. So it it's, we will be working really closely with them. They they like to be a part of every step. So I feel like. As we're moving forward, if we run into these hurdles that that you've all brought up. I think that is a conversation that we will have. It it is a matter of, you know, we either have to. Decline, decline the grant at that point, you know. But as Tom said, we're we're not out. We're not out money in the beginning because we have that match money that it the match money goes into effect first. And then after that match money, that's just how the E D A works. Is that right, Tom?
Yes.
It was like they're they're the second pair.
If they're, no, yeah, they're the second pair. And what I understood though is we have to make sure that again. Whatever we're gonna include, include in all of our bid packages, all of them have to be in place before we can claim that reimbursement. So we really need to define the scope and and then go to them and then they'll start reimbursing. They wanna approve of all of them and before before they'll reimburse.
And what was the match on that six hundred and eighteen thousand?
I don't have, Renee, do you have?
It was like a hundred and thirty thousand. It it was about a hundred and thirty thousand. And this, the scope of this project literally is the the engine from Lyons Park and two rail cars. That is, that is it. That's all we were approved for.
Only two cars.
It was a nineteen twenty-seven Pullman passenger car in the nineteen thirty-six caboose. And those were cars that other people really wanted for their collections, yeah.
So we're talking about twelve rail cars that are totally outside the scope of that E D A contract.
Yes, sir. That would be stored at the Swan Ranch, yes.
Those twelve cars are given to the city by U P.
That's my understanding from the, from the agreement that Stephanie's gonna get through this week or next week, I guess, from from the U P attorney.
Yeah, there's a lot more cars than that. But when Dominic went out there, they looked at a bunch of cars that were really bad. That there was no, I mean, a big engine that was, there's no way that.
That makes you suspicious, doesn't it?
Yeah, but the ones that that are left were ones that they thought could be easily brought in and restored. They were pretty good shape.
Do we have to take them all or can we take three?
I think we can have as many as we want.
And you'll make sure that in the M O U it says we can sell them if we. That's a great idea.
I'm far more comfortable with three that we initially heard about thus far than taking one, twelve more.
I can sell them. I don't know if I can get them financed though.
It's all transportation.
No, so I think you, the way that we answer the three questions for this one is, this is obviously a multi-year goal. And we might be making some course changes on this one, especially when we're talking about the cost of the cars and things. And then the action items that I have up here is Stephanie will grab the M O U. Renee will get a, get in touch with the local restoration expert in his opinion. I need somebody to take on reviewing the asbestos asbestos reports and setting up an inspection of the rail cars. And then Tom, I'd like to know who's gonna take ownership of the four bid packages per year's line, which you can sign this tomorrow.
Okay.
In my office, because we have one more goal to go and we need to get that.
Evening. Alright, so just a quick update on where we are with the gymnastics facility. I think everybody is aware that we have five acres of land to the west of the Iceland event center. That was the original idea of where we would place the gymnastics facility and possibly a gymnasium. There, there's been a lot of development over in that area, redevelopment of the Henson Post property, the South Forty property. And so there was a little delay so that some engineering work could be completed for storm drainage. And so while that was taking place, we decided maybe it'd be in our best interest to explore other properties that we own. That might be able to facilitate a gymnastics facility. So we looked at areas like Kaleo Park. Just south of Menards, that was originally where the the first rec center was proposed to go. And what we found there is just with the six F boundary and with some of the land and water funds that have been utilized in that area. Then it makes it problematic to create indoor recreation because of the funding mechanisms. And so. We also did a massive plan for Eastside Community Park or Eastside Community Park. And we do have some plans that include indoor rec facilities, so gymnasiums, gymnastics facilities and so on. Recently, we met with folks developing the South Forties, the back forty, the back forty. And in in part of what they were trying to accomplish is to, is to figure out how they would create a region, regional retention pond. In the area that we own, the five acres, probably lends itself best for that type of development. We do have an option of sleeving this, the storm drainage to the north into Crow. Right behind the Iceland event center. And I'm working with Director Cobb now to get some cost estimates on moving some of the dirt and earthwork. To see if we can make that still work for a facility. In the meantime, there's also an opportunity or an option to explore private property or a private building. And so there are a lot of moving pieces, a lot of moving parts. I think we're still in the, in our, doing our due diligence, trying to create. Capture up to date dollar amounts of what it would cost to to get the materials to build. And then estimated time on delivery for the metal, because metal has not been as easy to acquire as it was a few years ago when we got started. And so I really just need a little bit more time to to finish doing some research and to visit with you guys on some possible options. So we have the best plan going forward.
You had gone out Saturday and looked at a prime property.
We did.
Did you elaborate on that or did you?
You know, we saw some questions about it. You know, the building we looked at was about sixteen thousand square feet. Thirteen thousand, I think, on the main floor, three thousand on the mezzanine. It worked really well. I met with the gymnastics supervisor today to find out what that would do. It sounds like that building could handle our current. Group of students in all those on the waiting list and maybe another hundred kids. When I asked what the potential is, so that would be seven hundred total. When they asked what they, what she thought the potential in Cheyenne was, she thought they could get. Someplace between twelve hundred and fourteen hundred kids if size was not, you know, if it was a bigger facility. And so. So we we just need to take, we need to take a look at, you know, the cost of, you know, a building like that versus what we could build. And so. That's what Mr. Sanchez is working on. Jason's trying to find out what it, what, what it would cost to build. You know, a hundred and fifty by two hundred building, which is about thirty thousand square feet versus, you know, about sixteen thousand. And then we can make a comparison to figure out if that makes sense. The the thought though is, is that. If you did buy this facility and it can get us through for a few years, it'd be a great place to put a turf, a field or something else. I'm just not sure in three or four years, we have the two or three million dollars to build another, another building. So I'm really concerned about. A couple of council people talked, that I've talked, said we wanna make sure we do it right. So, so that's where we're at right now. There is a facility available. That could work really well for our current needs, but may wouldn't let our our program grow. And so.
Would there be room on that building to for addition?
I was wishing that was the case. But it's, it's in. Yeah, it's in a a development. There's everything around it. There's no, there's no additional.
And and the location isn't necessarily conducive. And and parking is is relatively limited.
Yes, thirty-three parking spaces. So it has some limitations, but. For, yeah, well, they're they're not, they're not. They come in groups. You know, a a group comes and then there's an hour, then the next group comes.
But that says, Scott, I mean, there was, there was a lot, there's a lot to like about this particular facility, but I mean, there are, there are limitations.
We currently have about four hundred kids in our program and we have two hundred and twelve on a waitlist. If we were to acquire that property, we'd be able to facilitate all of those, all seven hundred. There's about seven hundred kids.
Where are we currently right now? Because I know we had to move out of the one.
We're in the neighborhood facility. The neighborhood facility was four thousand square feet. We're currently at East Ridge. One of the gyms. And that's fifty-five hundred square feet. And again, the the building that that were, the model we were trying to follow was a building from called Extreme Altitude Gymnastics. It's in Colorado. And it's two hundred, five hundred and fifty. So the thirty thousand square foot facility. And then the other facility we're looking at, sixteen thousand, seven hundred.
Do we have the opportunity to stay at East Ridge at least through the school year or?
So we're working with the school district on that. There's a lot of moving parts to that as well. We're struggling. We're having a little bit of. We're, we have a lot of kids participating in all of our indoor activities and we don't own any gyms. And so we're really working hard with the school district to try to find opportunities to facilitate all of our youth programs and our adult programs. We're, we're, we're trying. So to answer your question, I think we can remain there for a while. But I believe what they, their understanding, the school district's understanding is that we cannot be considered permanent residents in that facility. We have to be temporary users. And so we've been in there for about two months now. I think we have a little bit. But that is also something we need to understand and keep in the consideration.
Take us while to build something.
Now, this is a. So, I'm sorry, this is a steel building that we're putting up. And so it literally is just a steel building. You put mats on the floor, so.
And insulation, no.
For sure. So I think the construction would be fairly easy other than than the small office area that you'd have to have with it. So it would go quickly once we, once we made the decision on the parts we're here. But I think getting the steel to erect is gonna be the challenge. And we we should have that information here in the next few days.
And pouring concrete in the winter time is not.
But that quotes from this company over since twenty nineteen, we keep updating them. I reached out again for an updated cost. The cost obviously will continue to increase. It's, it comes down to parts availability though. How long would it take to get the metal here so we can erect the structure?
Do you have to pour the floor first or can you put the structure up and then as well?
I'm not sure, but I will look into that. I'll ask the contractor.
So what was your first choice of locations if we decided to put up our own building?
Well, the first choice was to the west of the Iceland event center because there was synergy right there and we owned the land. Well, the first choice was, uh, to the west of the Ice and Events Center because there was synergy right there, and we owned the land. Uh, but when, when you start doing the research and looking at what, uh, opportunities or potentialism, maybe needs for regional retention, that also comes into play. Um, how the road systems would work. Um, and so there's, there's, there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of information that we're trying to filter out so that we could give you an accurate representation or a suggestion of, hey, we should go left or we should go right. Um, I, I could give you all the information I have right now, but I can't tell you that, that I feel that this is the best direction to go. I think we're a few days away from being able to provide that. And so as soon as I have the information, I'll share it, uh, or at least through the mayor's office.
Tom, can you just talk about the detention, where people have a finding answer, and what's gonna be required so we, we know?
So we did do, I, I had Cassie, my new engineer, goodness, she ran some earthwork for me. I do have that number now. So I'll be able to update some costs for you on the moment. Cause, well, one of the things about the parcel that the White gave, and it's very nice that they donated the parcel, and I certainly appreciate it. But it is some complicated piece, meaning it has a very high ridge, very low areas. So it's, it really is a complicated little piece because all of the entire area above the back forty, behind the hitch post, including the old hitch post, drains to that area. It is the low spot. So we have to mitigate that in some fashion. And as Jason indicated, you know, there is an option, we can pipe it, but then we're gonna have to call his facility along with all the others would have to do detentions. And as we just talked about, we have several. So that means that each parcel would do its own detention. With, with the regional facility, I had a thought when we early got onto this, that there's a potential possibility, since everything drained there, that we could turn this into a regional facility. Then, then each person that came in would pay for the upkeep and the construction of that regional facility. So I, and I didn't realize that this was going on with the gymnastics facility on the side. So I was kind of on the side of that, but um, I'm, now I'm happy, I'm reversing the direction and we're adapting. And so I'm gonna come up with some costs. But again, I'm gonna include the cost for this facility to, because it also would be, he's gonna have to partner, this facility is gonna have to partner in the road construction and the, the water and the sewer, as well as their own detention facility. So these are costs that weren't included in the original estimates that I'm sure he, he put together with the bill. Yes, sir.
The developer of the Hitchcock Post property, is there any, uh, land joining our property? That we could potentially purchase to make this work and still rest it, or trade or?
Mr. Seager, the, the Whites did indicate that they would be amicable towards that, um, if they were able to use it as a regional facility.
I guess my point is we've got five acres. If we, what do we need for a regional facility?
It's about two and a half to three. It takes up a good, a good half to almost three quarters the site.
Does, does the developer have additional two acres that we could purchase?
There are additional acres to the west of where they're planned.
We're gonna do the best.
We're, we're working on that. There, there's still a lot, there's still some details that need to be ironed out. Uh, and that's why we were starting to pursue other areas that could potentially be at home for a gymnastics facility. All of that was just to be Plan B while we were doing this work here.
So, I like the idea of the ice center gymnastics, so potentially.
I, I like that as well, but I also think if we were planning to build a facility in the new Kiwanis Park, that, I mean, if we're gonna build a facility and have to go somewhere besides that location, that maybe that's a two-in-one situation. Um, but I think it would be helpful as you get more information and as we get further down the road with calculations and things, that this is another thing that we could do a work session on, on Friday.
Sure. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Will we get a copy of this slide deck?
But I am gonna give you a hard copy of the, uh, the letter from the beginning of the year when we did our goals, cause we're two and a half months away. From meeting for twenty twenty-three goals. And I think we need to look hard at the, and this has all the goals that were brought up back then. On the ones that we looked at there, the secondary goals that they need to carry over, and obviously some of these are gonna carry over. And I'd really like to get it done before mid-December screams bias. I'll leave this one with you for more. Um, so I'm gonna give you that before I do that. I need somebody to take ownership for setting up this work session. Jason or Jennifer?
It'll be a good accomplished effort.
Well, I think some, and that's, you'll see those in there when you go through. There, there are some things that didn't make the final set that we did accomplish this year that, that you guys got done.
Cleanse storage building, that's on Jason's list.
Listen, I want to see anything else before I say I'm done. Mayor Collins? All right. Thanks for making time for this tonight.
Thank you.